Calling to order the House Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce. It is Wednesday, February 15th, 2:00 P.M., and we're in Room 329. Okay, we have 24 measures on our agenda today, so we'd like to keep it moving. So we will be limiting testimony to two minutes. For those of you on Zoom, if you do have any technical issues, you can contact our staff through the chat function. If there are still issues when you do come to testify, we can come back to you if we have the time. Okay, we'll be moving on to the first item in the agenda, HB 389-HD-1 relating to taxation. This establishes a carbon sequestration income tax credit effective July 1st, 3,000. First to testify, we have Department of Health, Environmental Health Administration with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee members. My name is Mary Ann Rossio from the Department of Health. The department stands on its written testimony, offering comments, and we're here if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Department of Taxation with comments.
Well, Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee, David Richmond on behalf of the Department of Taxation, the department stands on its written testimony, offering comments.
Thank you. That's the all. We also have written testimony in support from the State Hawaii Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission. Two individuals in opposition, one individual in support. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to the next measure, HB 588-HD-1 relating to renewable energy. This requires the Public Utilities Commission to establish reliability standards and interconnection requirements for certain renewable energy projects, provided that any costs for changes in reliability standards or interconnection requirements shall not be the responsibility of the interconnection customer after the interconnection customer's power purchase agreement has been approved by the Public Utility Commission. Requires the Public Utility Commission to distinguish between interconnection facilities and utility network upgrades. Ensures that the cost of interconnection facilities is the responsibility of the interconnection customer and ensures that the cost of utility network upgrades is the sole responsibility of transmission provider. Establishes a timeline and requirements for interconnection procedures to be established by the Public Utilities Commission for certain utility-scale renewable energy projects effective July 1st, 3,000. First to testify on this measure, we have DCCA with comments.
Aloha and good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, members of the committee, Dean Shina with the Division of Consumer Advocacy. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments, but available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the PUC with comments.
Aloha, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, members of the committee. I'm Clarice Schaefer from the Commission. We stand on our testimony and we're available for comments.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaiian Electric in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Craig Schimokala from Hawaiian Electric, testifying in opposition to this bill. Just a few highlights from our written testimony. You know, Hawaiian Electric shares the goals of timely interconnection and completion of renewable energy projects, but just want to point out that there are a number of improvements in flight currently to improve this process, notably the performance-based regulation that the PUC is implementing and it started recently. And secondly, out of Act 201 from the 2022 session, that first phase of the report was submitted at the beginning of this year, the second phase to follow. So we think it'd be prudent to let those actions in flight take effect first. Thank you. We're available for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Building Industry Association, Hoi, in opposition. Okay, I guess they're not here right now. So, members, we also have written testimony with comments from the Hawaii Solar Energy Association, comments from Ulupono Initiative, opposition from the Kauai Island Utility Cooperative, support from Hawaii Clean Power Alliance, opposition from an individual and another individual in support. Members, are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 193-HD-1 relating to Energy Efficiency Portfolio Standards. This extends the state's energy efficiency portfolio standards from 2030 to 2045 authorizes the Public Utilities Commission to establish interim goals effective July 1st, 3,000. First to testify on this measure, we have DCCA with comments.
Aloha again, Dean Shina. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments, available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii Public Utility Commission with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, and members of the committee. I am Ashley Norman with the Public Utilities Commission. We stand on our written testimony and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, how's it going? Chris Youngker from the Hawaii State Energy Office, we stand on our written testimonies in support and are available for questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Hoi Energy in support.
Aloha, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, and members of the committee. Caroline Carl with Hoi Energy, standing on our written testimony in support of HB 193-HD-1. Appreciate the opportunity to testify and I'm available to answer any questions as they arise.
Thank you. Next, we have Blue Planet Foundation in support. Seeing that they're not here, members, we have written testimony in support from County of Kauai, Office of Economic Development, Ulupono Initiative, Climate Protectors Hawaii, Hawaii Solar Energy Association. Two individuals, Department of Budget, oh, I'm sorry, and two individuals. Members, any questions? Okay, moving on to HB 949. This is relating to renewable energy. Establishes and appropriates funds for a solar energy storage system loan program to provide asset-limited income constraint employed households with low-interest loans to purchase and install solar energy storage systems. Establishes and appropriates funds for a renewable energy system installation loan program to provide low- and moderate-income families with low-interest loans to purchase and install residential photovoltaic and energy storage systems, including battery storage systems, effective June 30th, 3,000. First to testify on this measure, we have Budget and Finance with comments. I'm sorry, they're not here in person. Sorry, we'll be moving on to DCCA in support.
Aloha again, Dean Shina with the Division of Consumer Advocacy. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure, available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Gwenn Yama Murula, Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority, and we stand on our written comments in strong support and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaiian Electric in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Kuyu Lanishin Sato on behalf of Hawaiian Electric. We stand on our written testimony. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Solar Energy Association in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Rocky Mould, HSEA. I stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Matthew Guyer in support. Seeing he's not here, members, we also have written testimony in support from the Ulupono Initiative, Climate Protectors Hawaii, 350 Hawaii, and four other individuals. And Budget and Finance has comments. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 198. This is relating to electric vehicles. This established, sorry, HB 198-HD-1 relating to electric vehicles. This establishes and appropriates funds for the low-to-moderate-income electric vehicle rebate program and the electric vehicles subaccount to encourage the purchase and use of electric vehicles by low-to-moderate-income households and nonprofit organizations providing assistive services to low-to-moderate-income households, effective July 1st, 3,000. First to testify on this measure, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, Chris Youngker from the Hawaii State Energy Office, we stand on our written testimony in support and are here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alliance for Automotive Innovation in support. Are they here on Zoom? Okay, moving on, Hawaiian Electric in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee members. Jun Chi with Hawaiian Electric, and we stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Blue Planet Foundation in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, we stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Next, we have Ulupono Initiative in support. Seeing they're not here, Matthew Guyer in support. Not here as well. Okay, members, we have numerous testimonies in support from the State of Hawaii Climate Change Mitigation Adaptation Commission, County of Kauai, Office of Economic Development, Big Island Electric Vehicle Association, Climate Protectors Hawaii, 350 Hawaii, and about a dozen other individuals in support, an individual in opposition. Finally, Budget and Finance with comments. Members, are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 181-HD-1 relating to cesspools. Implants the recommendations of the cesspool conversion working group to accelerate the dates for required upgrades, conversions, or connections of priority level-one cesspool and priority-level-two cesspools by requiring priority-level-one cesspools to be upgraded, converted, or connected before January 1st, 2030, and priority-level-two cesspools to be upgraded, converted, or connected before January 1st, 2035, rather than before January 1st, 2050, effective June 30th, 3,000. First to testify on this measure, we have Department of Land and Natural Resources in support. Seeing they're not here, we'll be moving on to Department of Health, Environmental Health Administration in support.
Seeing they're not here, but the Department of Health, we stand on our written testimony in strong support.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority in support. Thank you. We have VAI, Water Alternatives and Innovations in support. Are they here on Zoom? Okay, we'll be moving on to Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Ted Boland on behalf of Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, very much in support of this bill. I think it's the most important bill that came out of the cesspool conversion working group on which I served with Chair Lowen and others for four years. We've done a lot of study, we've done a lot of work, and we've tried to find the best way to move forward with what is a really big problem for Hawaii. We've got 80,000 cesspools that put out 50 million gallons of pollution a day, and we need to deal with that, and we need to get started now. There's a mandate to finish all the cesspool upgrades by 2050. We're not going to get there unless we get started. And in the meantime, the working group has figured out the highest priority cesspools that need to be upgraded now by 2030, second group by 2035, and the other 70% or so can stay at 2050 because they're not as much of an impact, and we can spread that out. But this is a sensible way to move forward, to take care of the serious infrastructure problem that we've got in Hawaii, and to do so in a way that takes care of our waters as quickly as possible, because they are getting very badly polluted. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'll answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Realtors with comments.
Thank you, Lindsay Garcia from the Hawaii City Sheriff's, we stand on our testimony offering comments.
Thank you. Next, we have Matthew Guyer in support. Not here. So, members, there is written testimony in support from the State of Hoi Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission, Friends of Hanuma Bay, Surf Riders Foundation, Hawaii Region, Kingdom Pathways, and three other individuals. Are there any persons here to testify on this measure? Members, do you have any questions? Go ahead.
This question is for Hawaii Realtors.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon. Right now, if this bill were to be enacted, does this propose a large financial burden on homeowners?
Well, currently, there already exists a mandate to 2050, and we're not, the Hawaii Realtors is not opposed to the mandate or to cesspool conversion occurring. The point of our testimony is really to say that, you know, we respectfully recommend that efforts to aid communities and homeowners with cesspool conversion focus on financial assistance as well as wastewater infrastructure planning and development, because the financial challenges will not be overcome by moving the mandate forward.
Okay, and then my understanding is that basically if this mandate goes forward And then, my understanding is that basically if this mandate goes forward, a lot of poor homeowners, it's going to be a challenging for them to convert their cesspool. Does Hawaii Realtors have any comments on that?
In general, I believe the cesspool conversion working group did do a financial analysis, and it was discovered that 97% of homeowners will have challenges converting their cesspools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 520 HD1 relating to economic development. This establishes the Access to Local Food Act to allow cottage food operations to sell cottage food products under certain conditions upon receiving a permit from the Department of Health effective June 30th, 3,000. First to testify on this measure, we have Raul Craigan in support. Is he on Zoom? Members, we also have written testimony in support from the Hawaii Farms Union United Institute for Justice individual, and we have comments from the Grassroots Institute of Hawaii members. Oh, I guess there's really no questions to be asked. So, we'll be moving on to HB 71. This is related to summary possessions. Requires that a current GAT license number for any rental income be filed with the complaint to the court for summary possession proceedings. Requires the judiciary to submit an annual list of certain information regarding summary possession cases to the Department of Taxation. First to testify on this measure, we have Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments. Not here. Members, we also have written testimony in support from an individual. Seeing that there's no one to ask questions to, we'll be moving on to HB 1382 HD1 relating to meat donation. Provides for donation of wild game to under-resourced communities. Establishes a task force for development and implementation to expand meat processing capacity in the state. Appropriates funds effective June 30th, 3,000. First to testify on this measure, we have Hawaii Department of Agriculture in support.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Sayama and committee members. Morisata, Deputy Director for Department of Agriculture. The Department will stand on its testimony, supporting and offering comments regarding some of the concerns that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have the Attorney General with comments.
Good afternoon, Deputy Attorney General Brian Yi. On behalf of the Attorney General's Office, we've noted for your committee the constitutional technical concern as well as proposed fixes to that to ensure that the task force is placed within a principal committee or is otherwise sunsetted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Agro Business Development Corporation in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Agro Business. We stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Cattlemen's Council in support. Not present, okay. Members, okay, we have written testimony in support from the County of Maui City Council, County of Maui Office of the Mayor, Maui County Farm Bureau, Hawaii Farmers Union United, and an individual, all in support. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 1295 HD1. This is relating to farms. Appropriates funds to the Department of Agriculture to provide grants to certain chicken farmers effective July 1st, 3,000. First to testify on this measure, we have the Hawaii Department of Agriculture in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, and committee members. Morisata for the Department of Agriculture. Again, we'll stand on our testimony in support with comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we have written testimony in support from the Hawaii Farmers Union United. Members, are there any questions? Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? Okay. Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 1359 HD1 relating to hemp. This repeals redundant regulations on hemp production, which will reduce costs for the state at Hawaii farmers. Amends the hemp law in a manner that recognizes the unique constraints of Hawaii farmers while protecting human health. Allows licensed hemp producers to sell hemp biomass. Requires transparency and labeling of hemp products to identify the percentage of Hawaii grown hemp or hemp products in all hemp products. Requires and appropriates money for the Department of Health to hire or consult a toxicologist or consultant familiar with hemp industry standards for the purpose of setting defined action limits or exposure levels for different types of hemp products. Extends the state's hemp processor law through July 1st, 2027. Repeals on July 1st, 2027. Effective June 30th, 3,000. First to testify on this measure, we have the Hawaii Department of Agriculture in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Morisata Deputy. Once again, the Department will stand on its testimony, supporting much of the bill and offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Department of Health, Environmental Health Administration with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Lori Nagatoshi with the Health Department. And we stand on our written testimony, offering comments, and I just wanted to offer a visual representation of what we mentioned in the testimony on page 1, line 13, that the 50-gram chocolate bar looks like this, and this could be about 150 milligrams of Delta-9 THC, and that's the reason why that the Health Department was always firm about not having hemp in food and then also not in spokeable forms like this. This is what we don't want to see. Anyway, thank you, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Hemp Farmers Association in support.
Aloha, Gail Bernbecker here, President of Hawaii Hemp Farmers Association. Thank you, Chair and committee members. We're in support of this bill, but are offering that an important amendment be introduced. We did submit written testimony. According to the website, it does say that it made it to you folks, but in the testimony packet, it doesn't seem to be there. And this very important amendment has to do with helping farmers out. Right now, on many of the islands, processing's at a standstill, which of course is impacting farming in general. And what we'd like to do is allow processing in indoor facilities in agricultural buildings and structures as allowed per HRS 4688 and in food hubs and agricultural parks. Right now, there's been an accidental exclusion of processing that was done with no incident until September of 2021 by requiring that all hemp processing be done in fully permitted buildings. And as we know, many agricultural products in this state are processed in agriculturally accepted buildings per HRS 4688. Without this amendment, like I said, processing for hemp has come almost to a standstill in this state, and there are only a couple registered processors in the state, and those of us in the outer islands away from those processors have no options, legal options at this point. And to ship, not only is there the cost of processing and shipping, we...
Looks like we've got cut off. Are you still there? Oh, okay. Sounds good. We'll be moving on then to Kauai Hemp Company in support.
President?
Dear committee chairs and members, thank you so much for allowing me to testify on behalf of Kauai Hemp Company. My name is Juddiah McRoberts, and I am a registered nurse and the president at Kauai Hemp Company. I've been in the Hawaii hemp industry since 2019 and have personally laid witness to the struggling industry over the past three years. Currently, there are less than 20 acres of hemp planted in Hawaii, even though there are almost 100 hemp licenses in the state. That means, within three years, almost no one who is interested in growing hemp is still in production. Industry is in its last gasp unless legislation can help to save it. I support HB 1395 in its original drafted form for many reasons, including the following. One, currently, legislation and DOH regulations have strangled Hawaii's hemp industry, while lack of regulation allows for noncompliant mainland hemp businesses to flourish. Now, HB 1359 legalized hemp biomass, foods, and beverages products. Hawaii consumers will continue to buy these products from mainland producers both online and in local shops since there is no regulation of noncompliant sellers. Two, defining hemp, defining and protecting hemp Hawaii CBD products allows consumers to buy local and support our island industry. And finally, the amendments made in HB 1359 HD1 to reassess the federal standard for Delta-9 in hemp products, which is currently set at 0.3%, would likely be the nail in the coffin for our industry, especially as it relates to dietary supplements. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Benz in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name's Robert Benz, generational farmer here from Kula. Very diversified farmer, disabled, and had to get brain surgery, and that was 2013 to 2016 when I was trying to testify first time for the hemp. This buffer zone provision in this bill is a huge reason why I strongly support HB 1359 The 500-foot buffer zone is so wrong in so many ways, and it stops so many farmers from participating. Over 10 acres, almost none of the land is even available to grow, and none of my neighbors have a problem with me growing it. It's all ag lands. The one farm that had a neighborhood group complain, they weren't from Hawaii, and the neighbor that complained weren't from Hawaii, so they weren't really able to work it out. But that group kind of ruined the entire industry with that buffer zone. 100-foot is much better than 500-foot, obviously, but for organic growing, the buffer zone is only 25-foot. So, 25-foot on ag land seems better. That's the biggest problem. I would also love it if there was some way to introduce language about microgreens. USDA is really great. They've told me that I can grow microgreens. They also told me that growing is regulated by them, so the buffer zone, they didn't think it was legal.
Mr. Benz, would you please summarize your testimony?
Also, the Hawaii Right to Farm Act, I don't think the buffer zone, it seems like to go against that. So, I support this bill, and mahalo.
Thank you so much. Members, we have written testimony in support from Mulcurran Landscaping and Nursery, Hemp Solutions Kauai, Kauai Hemp Company, Omao Labs LLC, and nine other individuals also in support. Members, are there any questions?
Have questions?
Oh, go ahead.
Department of Health. What is the number of the percentage for the Delta-9 tetrahydrocannabinol that we should put in?
It's 0.3% by dry weight for Delta-9 THC.
Okay. You know, kind of have to rip the bandaid off or point out the elephant in the room. Do you see any real difference between these hemp products that are being proposed and adult-use cannabis products that we see on the mainland in this area of things like drinks, beverages, food, candies, products?
Well, that's the reason why that the medical cannabis program, you know, it's limited by people who have a, patients who have a specific diagnosis, and then also the dosage is already specified. So, it's 10 milligrams, I think, per serving. I don't work for the medical cannabis program, but anyway, so that's the reason why that the current regulations, as it speaks, it's by dry weight. So, of course, the more, that's why we didn't want it in food, and that's why the more that something weighs, the more THC is going to be available, and that's why...
Okay, so I'm not asking about the medical cannabis products. I'm asking about, in your opinion, the products that are coming out of the industrial hemp industry, are they in any way demonstrably very different from the products that are coming out in adult-use cannabis markets?
It shows Leah as the president, then Ms. Melissa's husband as the treasurer, and there's no vice president. They're looking for a secretary. So, on the website, the only actual...
Go ahead.
So, Representative Bladdy, you had asked whether or not if these products, these hemp products could be different from the medical cannabis end products, and that the answer is, it could be yes, the way that it is right now, because we don't...
Yes, they are different, or no, they are not different? That they look similar, act similarly when they're ingested by individuals, people like kids that we might be concerned about?
For this, for this measure that would allow it in food, that's why the department does not want hemp in food, and that's the reason why the current hemp products are only in very specific forms, in capsules, pills, soft jills, et cetera, and not in any conventional foods like this, and...
Okay, thank you. I think you've answered your question. Thank you.
Thank you. Before any more questions, we actually do have additional testimony from the Attorney General's Office.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. I apologize for the late testimony. We supply comments, I'm sorry. This is Jody Yee at the Attorney General's Office, and we submitted our comments on this bill. We have concerns about the sections which are prohibiting all penalties, and they appear to be overbroad, and we have asked that you consider possibly striking that. I'm here for questions if you have any.
Thank you. Members, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 329 HD1. This is relating to energy. Requires solar conduit and electrical panel readiness for new residential construction and electric vehicle readiness when the electrical panel and parking area are installed. First to testify on this measure, we have State of Hawaii Climate Change Mitigation and, oh, sorry. First to testify, we have Naya Hawaii Chapter in opposition.
On behalf of not Hawaii, we stand on our comments in opposition.
Thank you. Next, we have Building Industry Association Hawaii in opposition. Seeing they're not here, we'll move on. Blue Planet Foundation in support.
Thank you, Chair. We stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you. Okay, members, we have written testimony in support from the State of Hawaii Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission, Kauai Climate Action Coalition, Climate Protectors Hawaii, Ulupono Initiative, 350 Hawaii, Big Island Electric Vehicle Association, Hawaii Solar Energy Association, and numerous individuals in support. Members, are there any questions? Go ahead.
This question is for Napa, Hawaii?
Napa, Hawaii?
Aloha.
Aloha. So, with this bill, if it gets enacted, how much would this charge additionally for builders?
From our estimations, we've, you know, especially for affordable housing units, this could have an additional extra impact. Just because, you know, the difference between single-family and some affordable units is that single-family homes have their parking garages installed into the house versus if the electrical conduit has to go through cement and to these multiple parking stalls, it could be in the couple of thousands, you know, so that could increase per unit. And that's where our concern is derived from, is that, you know, this could be passed on to the consumer eventually. So, yeah, hope that answers your question.
So, with there being an affordability issue in Hawaii, do you think this would hurt the market with making houses more expensive in Hawaii?
I think that's our understanding, is that, of course, if costs of construction goes up, you know, the costs of the housing would have to go up at that point as well, and we don't want, really want to do that for buyers at this point.
Thank you.
Members, are there any other questions? Oh, go ahead.
Sure, you can stay there. Do you know the difference in cost between doing the EV-ready upfront versus retrofitting after construction is complete?
I do not have those direct numbers between retrofit and upfront costs on me at this moment. I can follow up with you on that as well.
I'm sure someone else here can probably answer, but do you, will you, can you say which one costs more to do it with new, during the process of new construction without having to go in a retrofit or retrofitting?
We would probably agree that, you know, retrofitting is more costly than doing it upfront, but to that end, you know, I still think this adds on to the price of housing, you know, during construction.
Thanks. Yeah, and I think it does. And have you ever run the numbers to see how much savings owners of these units might miss out on if the EV-ready or PV-ready...
And have you ever run the numbers to see how much savings owners of these units might miss out on if the EV-ready or PV-ready features aren't installed? And therefore, in the future, they either have to pay more to retrofit and then will be able to access the savings associated with having PV or an electric vehicle?
No, we haven't looked at those numbers directly as to what the cost savings may be. We were primarily focused on what the upfront costs could be.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Members, are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 1236 HD1 relating to affordable housing. Allows a bank to invest in aggregate up to 2% sorry, up to 2% of the bank's total assets in limited liability partnerships, limited liability companies, and corporations formed to invest in affordable housing residential properties. Requires approval from the Commissioner of Financial Institutions to exceed this amount. Effective June 30, 3,000. First to testify on this measure, we have Chamber of Commerce Hawaii in support. Not here. We'll be moving on to Central Pacific Bank in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Kathy Camp, and on behalf of Arnold Martinez, I'm testifying in support of House Bill 1356. Primarily, I'll just highlight a couple of components from the written testimony. One thing is we're really asking the state to follow the FDIC guidelines. So the state law is consistent with our federal law. Another issue is regarding safety and soundness. Banks do have strong oversight from the FDIC and DFI with annual regulatory exams. Studies done by Ernst &amp; Young as well as Freddie Mac have shown that historically, Lytech properties have had very, very low delinquency and default rates. From a safety and soundness perspective, they are, have shown that they are very low risk. In addition, CPB's 30 years' history of investing in Lytech deals, we have not taken a loss. I think that I would say that we would want a passage of this bill only if there's no adverse impact to the DFI funding or adverse into the bank's tax rate. So I thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I will answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Iris from DCCA.
Aloha, Chair, Nakashima, and members of the committee. My name is Iris Ikeda. I'm the Commissioner for the Division of Financial Institutions, Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. So we unfortunately submitted late testimonies, and I apologize for that. But we support the intent of the bill to encourage financing for affordable housing projects. We just want to highlight the potential unintended consequences of raising the investment limit from 2% of a bank's capital and surplus to 2% of assets. This proposal may cause safety and soundness concern for the bank, which may in turn cause regulatory enforcement and in turn hurt consumers seeking affordable housing financing. So the two things about the safety and soundness is we're concerned about the amount of liquidity and investment concentration for any of the banks. State and federal regulators want banks to have diverse portfolios to be ready for any financial emergencies. If the bank would like to invest a large portion of their capital, that means that they cannot use it for any financial emergency. The last thing is this proposal may impact the revenue source for the division. So we get $2 million of franchise tax pursuant to 241-7, Hawaii revised statutes. And banks are able to take a tax credit directly from their payment of the franchise tax. If they were to take all of their credits from the franchise tax, in other words, not paying any franchise tax, we would not receive any revenue. And the remainder of what's not being used for the Division of Financial Institutions would not go to the general excise tax. So there would be two impacts there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Naya Poi Chapter in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Evan Oy, on behalf of Napa, Hawaii. We stand in support of this measure. You know, from our standpoint and our position, we're in a housing crisis right now. We need to get as much units built and constructed. And this would allow for an increase in capital available for projects to continue to pencil out and continue to move forward for our local residents. So, you know, happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members, we also have written testimony in support from HBM Building Supply, EAH Housing, High Ridge Costa Housing, Hawaii's Future, General Contractors Association of Hawaii, and an individual also in support. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 551. This is relating to, sorry, HB 551 HD1 relating to health. This prohibits the sale of flavored tobacco products and the mislabeling of e-liquids as nicotine-free. Authorizes the Department of Health to appoint, commission, or contract for services of inspectors. Establishes two full-time equivalent program specialist positions and one full-time equivalent hearing officer position. Appropriates funds effective June 30, 3,000. First to testify on this measure, we have Attorney General in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Chelsea Okamoto. I'm a Deputy Attorney General with the Tobacco Enforcement Unit. Our department is in strong support of this bill. And in our testimony, we just made a suggested amendment to remove specific citation to the Hawaii administrative rules. And that's just to avoid further statutory revision in the future. But mainly, we're here to thank the Chair and the committee for hearing this measure to address the youth vaping epidemic affecting our state and for your commitment to Hawaii's youth. We ask that you pass the bill, and we are available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima and Vice Chair Sayama, members of the committee. I thank the committee for hearing HB 551 HD1. I'm Lola Ervin, representing Dr. Kenneth Fink for the Department of Health. The Department of Health strongly supports this bill. We are really concerned about the health impact of flavored e-cigarettes and the uptake of our youth having been using them. And we noticed that we've been asking for such a ban since 2014. By 2020, 20% of our young adults also report using e-cigarettes. There's mounting evidence that e-cigarettes, which have high rates of nicotine, propylene glycol, which is a solvent, vegetable glycerin, which is an oil, and flavorants, which are approved for ingestion, not inhalation, are being inhaled by our young people. And it does raise a public health concern because there is mounting public evidence of the impact it is having on their health. There are citations on several more recent reports in our testimony. And the Department of Health, should this measure pass, is willing to administer this. We have learned that across other states, five states that have very similar laws, and across more than 360 municipalities, it is their departments of health that are enforcing such rules and laws. And so we thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Department of Education in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama. My name is Heidi Armstrong, Department of Education. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have American Heart Association in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Don Weisman with American Heart Association. Flavored tobacco has been used for many, many years to hook new users and to keep those who are already addicted from quitting. And so they're a major problem. They are what are driving the e-cigarette epidemic in our youth and keeping adults from quitting. E-cigarettes have been falsely marketed as a safe alternative to traditional cigarettes and as a tool to help adult smokers quit. That's untrue. You'll hear from proponents of tobacco products that these are being used successfully to help adults quit. They're quitting cigarettes, but they're staying hooked on e-cigarettes and the nicotine and the higher nicotine levels in e-cigarettes. And that's a problem because we now have evidence showing that nicotine causes the same level of harm to the cardiovascular system as do traditional cigarettes and potentially worse harm because of the higher levels of nicotine. And cardiovascular disease remains the leading cause of death in our state and leading cause of major disability and leading cause of healthcare costs to our state and to our businesses. So we need to reduce the addiction levels and to control how many new users are getting addicted to these products because it's going to cause our state great harm, both health-wise and economically in the future. Currently, the FDA tobacco flavor policy falls short of what's necessary. So it's really important that we take this issue on at the local and state levels. Under the FDA guidance, thousands of e-cigarette flavors are still on the market as are menthol cigarettes. And if you leave one flavored product on the market, the industry will just change its marketing efforts to target those new users to the flavors that are still available. So you need to be comprehensive in removing flavors from the market. The FDA has also been ineffective in enforcing restrictions on flavored tobacco products that were disallowed.
Sorry, sir, please summarize your testimony.
So we support this strongly. Hope Hawaii will join the five other states that have already done it and hundreds of other communities that have done it.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii State Teachers Association in support.
Aloha, chairs and members of the committee. Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of Osatoui Jr., President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. The HSA supports this bill. And we stand on our written testimony that has all the data. I will comment on what teachers are saying. Students are vaping in the elementary, middle school, and by high school, they are addicts. Vapors are disruptive, impulsive. They have agitated behavior. They arrive late to classes or leave classes early to vape. What's the outcome? Low grades, they drop out. And more importantly, schools are labeled low-performing and are taken over with outside providers who goes into the schools to restructure the curriculum. Well, it is not the curriculum or the teachers who are the causes of failing schools in this situation. It is failed political policies that is not addressing the social-political problem of vaping in Hawaii by our children. Hawaii needs to stop the tobacco industry from profiting and continuing in causing an educational and health epidemic in our public schools. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network in support.
Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, and committee members. Cynthia Al on behalf of the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. ACS CAN stands in support of House Bill 551 HD1. Youth start with a flavored product, then becomes addicted to the nicotine. 21,000 youth alive today will prematurely die due to smoking-related diseases. Lung cancer remains the leading cause of cancer deaths in Hawaii with an estimated 1,400 adults dying from smoking every year. Tobacco remains the leading preventable cause of death nationwide. Smoking in any form is harmful and detrimental to health. On the FDA website, it says, "To date," quote, "to date, no e-cigarette has been approved as a cessation device or authorized to make a modified risk claim. And more research is needed to understand the potential risks and benefits these products may offer adults who use tobacco products," unquote. We ask the House to remain firm in their position throughout this session to end the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol flavors, without any exemptions. Thank you for the time and opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have Coalition for Tobacco-Free Hawaii Youth Council in support.
Chair Nakashima, members of the Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce. My name is Christine Nguyen, and I am testifying on behalf of the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Hawaii's Youth Council, which strongly supports HB 551 HD1. The Youth Council is a nationally recognized group of youth leaders fighting for the health of our own generation against the powerful influences of big tobacco. The Youth Council consists of students from middle, high school, and college across all the counties. You have heard from others about the youth vaping epidemic in Hawaii and the role flavors play. While the industry claims that they are trying to help adult smokers quit, the reality is that there are thousands of weapons clearly directed at kids, and some have taken to weaponizing our local foods and cultures with flavors like pog and a little Hassan fruit punch. Menthol in particular is one of the most popular flavors among teens, using names like ice and chill to describe the cooling sensation that couples with its minty taste. Menthol is the primary product used in predatory marketing against the youth and vulnerable communities. The industry considers Hawaii a menthol state with 70% of native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander smokers using menthol cigarettes perpetuating a legacy of public health disparities and corporate exploitation. Banning the sale of all flavored tobacco products will help end this deadly cycle of addiction and manipulation. As you heard, we have support from Hawaii voters and more than 100 organizations, many of which have submitted testimony and endorsed our policy priorities. Youth council members have presented to more than 24 Oahu neighborhood boards that have passed resolutions in support. You can see the full listing of these organizations in our written testimony. In fact, the only people that seem to be opposed to the bill are those who are addicted and those that profit from their addiction. All they have to share are old debunked stories to support the ridiculous claims. Take a look at our testimony, and you'll see excerpts from companies that make flavorings that are used in e-cigarettes. In their own words, they state that the FDA has not approved Flavora or any flavoring for inhalation. Vaping flavorings is inherently dangerous and may be harmful to your health. Do not attempt. Lorin oils cannot make any claims as for the safety of flavoring substances in e-cigarettes. Those using the flavors in e-cigarettes are doing so at their own risk. And in Easy Blends disclaimer, electronic cigarettes have not been evaluated by the FDA to treat or diagnose any disease or condition that are not intended for use in smoking cessation or for any therapeutic use. Nicotine, a chemical known in some states to also cause birth defects and other reproductive harm. You may also experience certain symptoms after using this product. Many can include blood vessels, chest pain, depression, shortness of breath, sweating, dizziness, throat irritation, rash, swelling, nosebleed, diarrhea, headache, and dry mouth, vaping and exposure to vaping.
Can you please summarize your testimony?
This doesn't sound like a product that we should allow to be sold in Hawaii. We urge you to end the sale of all flavored tobacco products and put people over profit. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony.
Thank you. Next, we have Taxpayer Protection Alliance with comments. Seeing that they're not here, we'll be moving on to.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry. I was expecting my name, so I wasn't really prepared. But I can go. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, thank you for your time today. My name is Lindsay Stroud. I'm Director of the Consumer Center at the Taxpayers Protection Alliance as well as a visiting fellow at the Independent Women's Forum. I did submit written testimony. I just want to go over some highlights. Like many other states, a lot of focus has been on youth use of e-cigarettes. And there's great news. According to the National Youth Tobacco Survey, between 2019 and 2022, current use of e-cigarettes among middle and high school students decreased by 53%. In 2022, less than 1 in 10 or 9.4% of US youth reported current vapor product use. Even better, traditional tobacco product use is at record lows with less than 2% of youth reporting current use of cigars, cigarettes, or smokeless tobacco products in 2022. The CDC is delaying the publication of state-specific data from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. They did publish a report on Monday that found that only 18% of high school students were currently vaping in 2021, which is actually a 45% decline from 2019 levels. And if lawmakers really want to address youth e-cigarette use, they should be aware of why youth are using e-cigarettes in the first place, and it's not flavors. Again, from the National Youth Tobacco Survey, in 2021, among middle and high school students that were currently using e-cigarettes, nearly half or 43.4% of them had used them because they felt, quote, anxious, stressed, or depressed. Only 13.2% of current middle and high school students that were currently vaping in 2021 reported using them because of flavors. And finally, if we really want to address youth e-cigarette use, lawmakers should use some of the already existing tobacco monies on tobacco control programs. In 2021, Hawaii collected over $135 million in cigarette taxes and settlement payments, yet allocated only $7.9 million in state funding towards cessation, education, and youth prevention efforts. In 2021, for every $1 the state received in tobacco monies from people who smoke, it spent only $0.06 on tobacco control efforts to help them quit. Again, I have written testimony, and I can answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Retail Merchants of Hawaii in opposition on Zoom. Okay, maybe they'll come back. Okay. Next, we have University of Hawaii in support.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. Oh, sorry, is that Mr. Pocrell?
Yes. Am I going or? Hi.
University of Hawaii.
Hi, this is Paulo Pocrell, researcher at the University of Hawaii Cancer Center. We stand on our written testimony, and I'm available here for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Consumer Choice Center in opposition.
Yes, hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Elizabeth Fix from the Global Consumer Abskey Group, known as the Consumer Choice Center. Simply put, this bill will do more harm. combustible cigarettes, and that flavor bans push consumers towards combustible tobacco, specifically those aged eighteen and under. Smoking-related illnesses are very serious and can lead to cancer. After being around secondhand smoke most of my life, this past year I received my very own cancer diagnosis, and I'm still undergoing treatment. And I can assure you, I would not wish this on anybody. Embracing vaping as a harm reduction tool than Hawaii will help ensure that your citizens are much less likely to end up in a situation similar to mine. More than a hundred thousand Hawaiians vape, and according to data from the Hawaii Journal of Medicine and Public Health, the largest demographic of Hawaiian vapers are actually sixty-five years in age or older and started vaping as a means to quit smoking combustible cigarettes. If there is a flavor ban, then consumers will look towards the illicit market in order to get access to their preferred flavored vaping products. Unlike vape shops, the illicit market does not abide by age restrictions, therefore making it much easier for youth to acquire these products illegally. It's important to embrace smart, evidence-based policies, and in that vein, I strongly urge you to reject this bill. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii State Youth Commission in support.
Aloha, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, and members of the House Committee. I am Zoe Dawn, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Hawaii State Youth Commission today. The Commission is in strong support of HB 551. As representatives of... The Commission is committed to promoting inclusivity, opportunity, and progress in Hawaii. This includes the health of Hawaii's youth. That is why the Commission strongly supports this measure, because its efforts to end the sale and mislabeling of flavored tobacco products is crucial to improving the health and lives of Hawaii's youth. For far too long, this issue has been brushed aside by tobacco companies, lobbyists, and interest groups, whose profits come from targeting and hooking kids on addictive substances. We must acknowledge that flavored tobacco products are a severe threat to the health of our youth, and that a simple ban of flavored products is critical and necessary towards a better future. Let's prioritize Kiki lives. As a representative of the children of youth of Hawaii, we beg of you to let this year be the year of change and to help us from this epidemic. Therefore, we urge you to pass HB 551. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have University of Hawaii Student Health Advisory Council in support.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Hanen, and I'm a member of the Student Health Advisory Council at University of Hawaii at Manoa. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of this bill, which would prohibit the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products, including menthol. The Student Health Advisory Council has played a pivotal role in the development and implementation of health policies and tobacco education in the UH system. We remain deeply committed to the mission of reducing the use of all tobacco products, including electronic smoking devices, among adolescents and young adults. With products like Volcano and other popular electronic smoking devices, it is increasingly clear that these products are addicting a whole generation of youth to a harmful product. The Surgeon General has gone so far as to declare the youth e-cigarette use an epidemic and states that there is an urgent need to protect young people from the lifetime of nicotine addiction and associated health risks. Electronic cigarettes are now the most commonly used form of tobacco among young people in the United States, surpassing conventional tobacco products, including cigarettes, cigars, chewing tobacco, and hookahs. The sale of candy-like flavored tobacco products entices young people to start using these harmful products, which can lead to addiction and cause damage to the developing brain. Menthol should also be banned, as it masks the harmfulness of tobacco and is one of the popular flavors among youth. Flavored tobacco products also increase individuals' risk for dual use of vape products and combustible cigarettes. Banning the sale of flavored and menthol tobacco products will help with the health issues disproportionately affecting those of lower economic status and people of color. The banning of flavored tobacco products, as well as providing tobacco education and cessation programs without mandatory penalty penalties for youth, is imperative if we are committed to protecting the health and well-being of our communities. Therefore, we urge you to support this measure and prohibit the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol, in the state of Hawaii. A holo from the Student Health Advisory Council.
Thank you. Next, we have Tobacco-Free Kids Action Fund in support.
Good afternoon, Chair and members. Lindsay Freitas with the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. I want to thank everyone today for hearing this important measure. We're in strong support of HB 551-HD-1. These policies protect our kids from an industry that will stop at nothing to target them with candy-flavored tobacco, all to hook a new generation and drive up their profit. The industry is working at every level to thwart this effort and protect their profits. They offer poison pill amendments. They ask for delays. They hire national front groups to confuse the issue. And when that doesn't work, they challenge these policies in court. They try to overturn them on the ballot. And then, when all of that fails, they rebrand these products to circumvent the laws themselves. Make no mistake that this is an industry that will stop at nothing to delay, overturn, and confuse at every step of the process, all so that they can continue to grow their profits at the expense of our kids. We've seen and heard it noted that this is a policy that isn't effective and doesn't work, but I think it's very important for us to understand that this is based on one study that was collecting data before a policy was even implemented. The author of that study has since had to file a correction and stated this analysis cannot determine whether the associations identified diminished, increased, or remained constant when the law was fully enforced. The claim that these policies don't work is incorrect, and I've included a summary in my testimony with all kinds of examples of where this policy has effectively stopped youth use. This is us versus big tobacco in a fight to protect our kids from their unrelenting efforts to increase their profits at any expense, and we need your help. I urge an i-vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we also have written testimony from Councilmember Susan L.K. Lee Loy from the Hawaii County Council in support. Other supportive testimony from the Hawaii Youth Service Network, Kaiser Permanente, Hawaii Health Harm Reduction Center, Waymanal Health Center, We Are One INC., Hamakua Cougars, Aloha Care, Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition, Hawaii Primary Care Association, Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks, Hawaii Public Health Association, Opportunity Youth Action Hawaii, and opposition testimony from Cigars Association of America, INC., Hawaii Smokers Alliance, Volcano Vape Shops, and written comments... Written testimony, sorry, testimony with comments from Reason Foundation. Are there any members here to speak or testify on this measure? Please, go ahead.
Yes, this is Jeff Spire with the Taxpayers...
Hold on. We'll take the in-person testimony first.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair members of the Committee, Peggy Mearsworth of Hawaii Public Health Institute. My testimony was late. Apologies. We've heard a lot of wonderful points today, and I just want to point out that fourteen hundred people in Hawaii die every year from tobacco-related diseases. We spend six hundred and eleven million dollars on tobacco-related healthcare costs, and this measure is part of a comprehensive approach that includes taxation and other types of regulation. And I just want you to know that registered voters also want regulation. In a poll conducted by Ward Research in November 2022, eighty-seven percent said the tobacco industry is purposely targeting and marketing its products to youth. Ninety-one percent of the respondents believe that e-cigarettes should be regulated as tobacco products, and seventy-six percent would support a law that would end the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol. As you've heard, these products are targeted at young people, and there is no health benefit. They're not FDA-approved cessation products. They're not low-risk alternatives. They contain toxic substances and cause disease. Today's e-cigarettes are twenty times more potent than those from 2013. That increased nicotine quickly addicts unsuspecting youth, and because of this danger, five states and a hundred and seventy municipalities have ended the sale of all flavored tobacco products. Tobacco companies respond with more predatory marketing to hook youth in places where flavors continue to be sold, and they'll continue to do so, funding campaigns, targeting our youth, and lobbying for their products to stay on the market because they need to have lifelong users. It's time for us to pass this policy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. I'm Pedro Haro, Executive Director with the American Lung Association. You have a written testimony. It's late. I apologize. I wanted to be able to address two points that you're going to keep hearing over and over from the tobacco companies. Number one is that there has been a reduction in youth vaping since 2019, and they're going to use that number, 2019, because guess what happened between 2019 and now? There was a pandemic. And so, you're going to see things like car crashes reduced, and all of this data will be unusable, and they're going to keep harping on that point, committee after committee, to be able to confuse lawmakers that there's actually a reduction. That is not true. The other thing that they're going to talk about is how it's a cessation device. Everybody has talked about how FDA has not deemed this a cessation device. I can speak to you for many years of being a tobacco cessation counselor. There's a three-chain link level of addiction. You have to be able to cut the behavioral addiction, which is the hand-to-mouth. You have to be able to cut out the biological addiction, which is the addiction to nicotine, and the social addiction, which is you go out, you smoke with friends, et cetera, et cetera. This does not meet the qualifications of being an effective cessation device. So I want you to remember this as you hear tobacco companies and tobacco-front businesses keep harping on these numbers and keep harping on this data, because it's simply not accurate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other persons here testifying on this measure? Okay, seeing none, we'll be moving to the gentleman on Zoom.
Hi, this is Jeff Spire with the Taxpayers Protection Alliance. I would ask the legislators here listening to this testimony to take a deep breath. You've heard a lot of inflammatory language. You've been asked to ignore the data about tobacco harm reduction, about how it does help people quit smoking, adult smokers, and no one has mentioned the fact that the federal law bans the sale of e-cigarettes of all types to youth. We are all against youth vaping. Youth vaping is bad, but adult smokers deserve the right to lower their risk by switching to a lower-risk product such as e-cigarettes. And adult smokers, in survey after survey, have stated that when they quit smoking, their sense of taste comes back, and they need flavors to maintain their cessation. The United States Food and Drug Administration is moving forward to support lower-risk products. It's part of the law. The experts have been working on this. I have critique of how they've been doing it, but they believe that there is a way to lower the risk for those who can't quit using nicotine altogether. Adults can move to lower-risk products. And if the state of Hawaii makes the mistake that we've gone down the path so many times of prohibition, we are only going to further move to illicit markets. Have we not learned the lesson? I am confident that the state of Hawaii is progressive enough to support the idea of harm reduction for so many topics. This issue, where so many people, especially people of lower income, especially communities that are disadvantaged, they deserve the same right to regulated, lower-risk nicotine products if they can't quit smoking. We can do better than this. Please ignore the inflammatory language and the ad hominem attacks by some of these groups, and let's get back to the science. Public Health England, the government of England, supports harm reduction.
Sir, can you please summarize your testimony? Your two minutes is up.
Thank you. The federal law gives the FDA the authority not only to ban products, but to encourage smokers to move to lower-risk products. Read the law, and please do not interfere with tobacco harm reduction that's being implemented at the federal level. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons on Zoom wishing to testify? Okay. I can't see who they are. There's a...
Hello.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima and members of the Committee. My name is Christine Lem, and I'm from Honolulu. I'm here today to support HB 551. I stand on my written testimony, but would like to point out the health inequity created by the tobacco industry and their predatory marketing of flavored products like menthol to Native Hawaiians, youth, and other groups. The results are that seventy-eight percent of Native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander smokers use menthol cigarettes, and most youth use menthol-flavored e-cigarettes as well. These numbers show that a ban on menthol flavors will significantly decrease the disproportionate effects of cigarette use in minority communities. As such, it's important that menthol flavors are included in the ban for both e-cigarettes and other tobacco products. The availability of flavored tobacco products are a primary cause of youth e-cigarette and tobacco use. Ending the sale of flavored tobacco products will protect our Kiki and advance health equity, as disparities in tobacco use are due to the tobacco industry's history of marketing menthol cigarettes to youth and people of color. End the cycle of addiction by ending the sale of all flavored tobacco in Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. One more person on Zoom, right? Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, Chair members. I apologize for submitting my testimony late. My name is Nakia Telloferro, an alumna of Honolulu High School and former resident of Salt Lake. I am testifying in strong support of HB 551, which aligns with my written testimony. The continued sale of flavored tobacco products has devastating impacts on our Kiki and the overall health of Hawaii residents. This bill is not preventing residents interested in quitting smoking to use alternatives. Rather, this bill ensures that big tobacco is not luring our children into becoming the next generation of smokers through enticing flavored products. Despite previous testimony, there's no way to downplay the impact flavors has on youth. According to CDC, eighty point two percent of high school students who use tobacco products reported using a flavored tobacco product, and according to U. Penn Institute of Health Economics, kids are less likely to smoke or vape when they can't buy flavored tobacco products. The evidence is clear. Flavored tobacco products are the main contributor to the teen vaping crisis in Hawaii. Acknowledging that youth vaping rates are decreasing does not mean that Hawaii should stand by while hundreds of youth continue to get addicted. And in fact, in Hawaii's case, the rate of daily vaping has more than doubled over the past two years, according to the Department of Health. If we want to ensure the health and safety of Hawaii's children, we must end the sale of flavored tobacco products. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Are there any other persons wishing to testify on this measure, Zoom, or in person? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Representative Bellotti?
This is Tobacco-Free Hawaii, or formerly Tobacco-Free Hawaii Public Health Institute. What is the regulation you propose to allow adults who choose to use flavored tobacco? What is the regulation you propose to allow them to do it in the state should this measure be passed?
They would be able to have tobacco-flavored. So this measure would end the sale of flavored tobacco products, including menthol.
How would you... But if... So if most of the testimony in support of this is to ban it from access to students, what is the other regulation to allow adults who would like to use it?
It's banning it from everyone.
So are you comfortable with them, adults who have free choice who would like to use this, then being left to acquire it online, and then that's how... That's basically the unfortunate consequence that you're willing to allow to happen?
I understand what you're saying. We still feel that ending the sale of all flavored tobacco products is really a public health plus for us and for everyone, not just children, but everyone.
So then, and I know this goes a little bit beyond, but you know, the e-cigarette... And I'm asking this as a person. Please remember that I was the chair who passed at the age of twenty-one, and we were the first state, and we were the ones to do this. But this type of regulation is starting to maybe go a little bit too far afield. Is the next step going to be to ban flavored e-liquids in tobacco? I mean, excuse me, in hemp, in industrial hemp?
We don't have a position on industrial hemp.
Okay, what about medical cannabis?
We don't have a position on medical cannabis.
And what about recreational cannabis?
We don't take a position on recreational cannabis, except to say that we would want to see... Same as Tobacco-21, smoke-free air laws.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Members, are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to the next measure, HB 1409-HD-1. This is relating to employee benefits. Extends under certain conditions, the family leave period for employees who are unable to perform their employment duties due to the birth of a child who is required to stay in a neonatal intensive care unit for up to eight weeks. Requires the Department of Health to amend its rules to include neonatal care as a related medical condition wherever the phrase pregnancy, childbirth, or other related condition is used, effective June 30, 2000. First to testify on this measure, we have the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations
Aloha, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, David Rodriguez with the DLR. The DLR stands on its written testimony in support of House Bill 1409, House Draft 1, and hopes you consider an amendment to clarify for up to eight weeks in the family leave law. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. We'll be able to answer questions.
Thank you. Members, we have supportive testimony from Early Childhood Action Strategy and two other individuals. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 1110-HD-1. This is relating to road usage charge program. Creates a mileage-based road usage charge to replace state motor fuel taxes beginning on July 1, 2025, for electric vehicles. Eliminates fifty-dollar annual state vehicle registration surcharge for electric vehicles. Allows electric vehicles a choice of paying a registration surcharge or a per-mile road usage charge until 2033. Requires motor vehicle... Allows electric vehicles a choice of paying a registration surcharge or a per-mile road usage charge until 2033. Requires motor vehicle registration application to specify whether the type of fuel for which the vehicle is adapted is electricity. Requires certificates of inspection to state the odometer reading for vehicles. Requires the Department of Transportation to plan for the deployment of a state mileage-based road user charge program by 2033 and submit a report to the legislature no later than 20 days prior to the convening of the regular session of 2026. Defines electric vehicles, defines alternative fuel vehicles, makes an appropriation effective June 30, 3000. First to testify on this measure, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office with comments.
Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, Chris Youngker with the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony with comments and are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments. No, okay. We'll move on then to Ulupunu Initiative in support.
Chair, Ulupuno stands on its testimony in support.
Thank you. Okay, members, we have written testimony with comments from the Hawaii Automobile Dealers Association, supportive testimony from Climate Protectors Hawaii, additionally supportive testimony from AAA Hawaii, and six other individuals. We have individuals in opposition, two, three, four individuals in opposition, as well as testimony with comments from Big Island Electric Vehicle Association. And, oh, that's it, sorry. And we have also written testimony from Department of Transportation. Is DOT here? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, and members of the committee. Tammy Lee, Acting Deputy Director for the Department of Transportation. The DOT stands on our written testimony in support with comments. I just want to highlight that this is not a double tax on the existing $50 surcharge for electric vehicle owners. What this measure does, it proposes to eliminate the existing $50 surcharge, replacing it with a choice for electric vehicle owners to, one, be in a road usage charge program to pay eight cents of a cent per mile, or, two, opt out of the road usage charge and pay a maximum of $50 flat fee. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Okay, members, are there any questions? Go ahead.
For DOT, Tammy, could please come on? You know, the bill gives the pilot program up to 2026 for implementation, or, I guess, to report back to the legislature on the finding. But it also gives the department up to 2033, another 10 years from now, in order to look at the conversion to long-term mileage-based road usage recharge implementation plan.
Yes, that's correct. And it's basically with our demonstration project. We issued our final report in August of 2022. And the recommendation that came out of that final report was to implement a road usage charge with minimal disruption. And so that's why, you know, the recommendation was to start with electric vehicles first. And the choice to opt out of the road usage charge would begin July 1 of 2025. Then, June 30 of 2028, the choice would be to pay, or the choice to pay the flat fee would end and implementation of the road usage charge program in 2033.
So, oh, implementation in 2033? Because it says to come up with an implementation.
Plan, my apologies. An implementation plan.
Why is it going to take another, I guess, five years after the, I guess, you're giving the electric vehicle owners an option to decide on whether or not to continue to, I guess, to continue road usage versus paying a surcharge?
From our final report, you know, the implementation plan is basically not only for the electric vehicle owners. It would be an implementation plan replacing the gas tax.
I understand. But you cannot do it as you're doing both? To come up with ideas and plans on how you're going to implement for everyone else?
I think that's what we're working on now. That's why I think the recommendation is to start off slow because I think there are lots of other issues that we have to kind of iron out, like, the recommendation was to use the existing safety check process to collect odometer reading, you know, between a year's time so that you know, you know, how much is your road usage charge. I think it also takes some back-of-the-house accounting system. It takes a coordination with the county, City and County of Honolulu DIT, and those types of coordination. They can go on simultaneously.
Well, I guess my concern is other states have been implementing this over the past 10 years. So you would think that Hawaii would be looking at the implementation in those other states, take best practices, and come up with an implementation plan faster than 10 years.
I understand. I think, was it Virginia, Oregon, Washington, Utah? They all have, I guess, have done some demonstration projects. Only a couple of them, I believe it's three, that are live. And it took Oregon, I believe, over 10 years to implement their program or plan to implement their program. So something that's real, I guess, disruptive. I think the public or just the community, I'm a community member that pays gas. You know, it's seamless. It's not seen. You pay it at the pump. The state gas tax is 16 cents a gallon. Just having this kind of disruptive, different way of paying for our roads and bridges, it takes time.
I agree. It takes education of the public.
Exactly.
But it is a replacement for gas taxes.
Yes, yes.
So I think if you can educate the public in terms of the cost benefit, which I think, you know, right now, people don't understand, especially those that have older vehicles, that they're actually paying, that have older vehicles and less miles per gallon than the average of, I think what you guys calculated, like 22 miles per gallon?
Yes.
That they're paying more than their share for road maintenance.
Exactly. And so just this past year, just really recently, we received another federal grant. You know, of course, we received a federal grant to do our demonstration project. We received a federal grant of $1 million. And in this measure, we're asking for the state match or appropriation of 1.3 million. We're also using 1.7 million of our federal formula funds to continue with the outreach and to continue, you know, with the conversations with the community.
Okay. I would hope that the department would reconsider the timeline. I think it's too excessive in terms of delaying this program and trying to get it out to the public. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, members, are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to the next measure, HB 562 HD1 relating to permits. This establishes an exemption from applicable county permit requirements for repetitive construction projects for facilities under the control of the Department of Education, University of Hawaii, or School Facilities Authority, effective June 30, 3000. First to testify on this measure, we have Department of Land and Natural Resources with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair and committee members. My name is Gisela San Andres with the LNR Engineering Division. We stand on our written testimony. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have School Facilities Authority in support.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. Scott Fuji, on behalf of our Executive Director, Chad Yuni Farias. We stand on our testimony in support. Available for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have DOE Facilities Development Branch with comments. Are they on Zoom? Okay. Okay, that's all the testifiers we have. Members, any questions? Representative Nish?
Thank you. For, I guess, the facilities development? Representative? If you could please come up. I have a concern in terms of how would you determine what is a repetitive construction project?
Since, Scott Fuji with the School Facilities Authority, because that term is undefined in the bill as it currently stands, we would have to seek clarification as to what would define that, either through our AGs, should the bill pass, or if there's further amendments to the bill moving forward.
Well, I don't see in your testimony a request to define what that is.
That's correct.
So it would seem by your testimony you're not concerned about that definition?
I think we would see clarification. And should this bill move forward, we can be clear about that in our testimony, representative.
Okay. I have a question in regards to this concept. If you folks, well, I don't know if you folks would be doing that versus the DOE Facility Management Guides, but who would inspect the work that is done by the contractors?
So my understanding of if this exemption was going to be put into place, representative, that we would need to set up our own internal processes to ensure that all of the appropriate codes or permitting requirements are still met, regardless of whether or not the permit is required or not.
So if we move ahead, you would need additional staff?
Potentially, yes, or.
But there's no request for staff?
Correct.
So currently, when you get a county permit to do this work, at the very end, if everything's completed to the law and meets the satisfaction of the inspectors, you get an occupancy permit from the county. How do you folks intend? Or is that going to be bypassed? Is the state going to assume the liability for occupancy?
I think, again, it would depend on what, the types of permitting that would be allowable under the repetitive work and whether or not we would then need to submit that information to the counties for an occupancy permit. But I think it would depend on the type of permitting work that's done, representative.
So if the county decides they won't give you a permit because they didn't inspect, then where would you stand?
On the occupancy permit?
On occupying the building or the facility?
I think we would have to look at that from a work perspective to ensure. The goal is still, representative, to be in compliance with all of the requirements. So it would be a matter then of working with the counties to ensure that our processes meet their expectations.
So is the issue the inspections and compliance? Or is the issue the timeliness of getting permits? I don't understand why the exemption. To me, it would seem like it's the issuing of the permits that's the problem and the time because the requirement to inspect, to then be able to occupy, is what the county is doing now. And you're going to be somehow duplicating this or needing to duplicate it in order to be successful in implementing this program.
I think what we would have to look at, representative, is what's the most expedient way to accomplish the work that's being described under this one? And we can certainly look into that and follow up with you about what the requirements of that might be.
So is this an admin bill?
I don't believe so. I believe it's introduced by Representative Yamashita.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, members. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 1219 HD1. This is relating to cannabis for medical use. Defines cannabis cutting and cannabis propagule. Amends the definition of cannabis to include cannabis propagules and cannabis cuttings. Allows qualifying patients and primary caregivers who are authorized to cultivate cannabis for medical use to purchase cannabis propagules and cannabis cuttings from licensed dispensaries in the state under certain conditions. Establishes quantity limits and quality requirements for the dispensing of cannabis propagules and cannabis cuttings, effective June 30, 3000. First to testify on this measure, we have the Attorney General's Office with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members. Andrew Goff with the Attorney General's Office. We would note that this bill does allow dispensaries to sell up to 10 plants every 30 days to a patient. A patient is actually limited to only 10 plants total. So we would just suggest that it's clarified that those two are tied together. And we did suggest language that would clarify that. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have the Department of Health with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Michelle Nakata for the Office of Medical Cannabis Control and Regulation on behalf of Dr. Kenneth Vink, Director of Health. The department stands on its written testimony commenting with concerns regarding the department's inability to track plant counts through the licensed dispensary system and our concern about patients exceeding their statutory limit as the Office of the Attorney General also stated. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maui-Grown Therapies in support. None here, okay. Members, we have supportive testimony from two individuals. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Rep. Bellotti.
Thank you. Questions for Attorney General. So your three amendments, the first one I see is, I understand how it's tied to the number of plants, but the next two are laboratory tests, so that doesn't relate to the number of plants, do they?
No, that's actually the amendments that are already in the bill. So we would just put them all together.
Okay. And then would, if we changed the 30 days to 90 days, would that alleviate some of the concerns about having too many propagules or cuttings out there?
Yeah, I mean, because of the gestation period of a plant, then that probably would help, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 955 HD1. This is relating to Chapter 457J Hawaii Revised Statutes. Exempts birth attendants practicing on or before July 1, 2025 from licensure requirements under certain conditions. Expands qualifications for licensure to include the North American Registry of Midwives' Portfolio Evaluation Process, effective June 30, 3000. First to testify on this measure, we have a DCCA with comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Leanne Tashima. I'm the executive officer for the midwives program. You have my written testimony, but I believe I inadvertently omitted a recommendation that we had at the last hearing regarding the definition for qualified preceptor. So I have that in writing if I can give that to you, if that's okay with you. Should the committee consider our recommendation?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next, we have, let's see, Pacific Birth Collective in support. Not present, okay, moving on.
Yes, no, I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, okay, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Aloha Chair Nakashima and Committee members. My name is Kiana Rowley. I'm the Vice President of Pacific Birth Collective here today to give testimony on behalf of our Board of Directors in support of HB 955 and Resolution 2328, which was approved by the Maui County Council and the 1,231 testifiers for the first reading in support of this measure. We stand on our written testimony and support reproductive choice for women of Hawaii. We're concerned about the roots of racism, oppression, and cultural erasure, which are compounded by the current HRS 457-J and have been acknowledged by NARM and many of the MEAC-accredited schools, which we are handing over the responsibility to train our licensed midwives. Many of these issues have been addressed in the Hawaii Home Birth Task Force findings, which have been linked on the Pacific Birth Collective website. And we also want to bring to light that there are currently no licensed actively practicing midwives who are, who have achieved their MEAC-accredited CPM training fully in Hawaii. Restricting access and forcing these practices to go underground will not improve safety. We're committed, we ask that the committee pass these amendments to keep the current birth attendant exemption and to include the portfolio evaluation process as a pathway to licensure so that we continue to work towards more equitable solutions. Mahalo, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Hoi Home Birth Collective in support.
Aloha Chair Nakashima and all Committee members. My name's Kristi Duarte. I was the Chair of the Task Force created by Act 32 and also the Board President of Hawaii Home Birth Collective. My written testimony was very thorough, covers a lot of misconceptions, but one misconception I wanted to add to that list is the idea that nothing is stopping a licensed midwife to practice and incorporate traditional practices. The reality is that the repository for the indigenous traditional cultural and religious knowledge of birth practices, that repository pretty much lies outside of the modern Western medical system. There is the perception that there are many licensed midwives serving the community, and that is not the case. Of the 28 licensed midwives, only 14 are practicing. Those are the 14 who would have to hand down all indigenous knowledge, yet none of the 28 are born and raised here. None are Kanaka Maoli. Only two are fully trained here. Yet do these two have the ability to pass down all the various lines of indigenous knowledge to student midwives obtaining licensure? That lies outside of their realm expertise and ability. That is why both of these licensed midwives, fully trained here, are testifying in support of HB 955. If we do not allow the practitioners to continue to pass down what they know under the title of a traditional birth attendant, those multitude lines of knowledge will be cut off and lost. I humbly request you support HB 955. I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maui Midwifery in support.
Hello, I'm on Zoom. I had signed up to present in person, but I'm on Maui. So I fully support the inclusion of the PEP process and the inclusion for traditional midwives to continue practicing in Hawaii. I'm a MEAC-trained midwife. I just graduated this last year with my bachelor's degree in midwifery and got licensed in the state. However, my training was very difficult to get in Hawaii. And in fact, I got most of my training on the mainland at birth centers. In fact, I spent six months of 2020 on the mainland doing different rotations. So what happened was that I graduated and began practicing in this community with very little reference as to what this specific community needs. And my training was also very expensive, required long time periods away from my family and my home. And I would argue that anybody not from a very privileged background would have a very difficult time completing it. And my training also is based in an American-style of midwifery, very medical-based, it's not a cultural program. And it doesn't translate well to Hawaii. And so I believe that the midwives here who are trained from elders, who have generational knowledge, who are boots on the ground in their communities in underserved areas, should be respected and allowed to practice. And I don't believe it dilutes my credential in any way. I think there are still people who are going to want a licensed midwife, and I'm here for that. But I believe making traditional midwives illegal will decrease the health of our state and doesn't do anybody a service. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have, oh geez. Malama Na Pua O Hou Mea, PBC, HIHBC Task Force, Rep. 4TM, HMC in support.
Aloha, my kaku, I'm sorry, don't have access to a video. This is kiinani kauhano hano and here from Maui. I'm one of the only practicing for over 20 years in training and in practice here in Maui. I am a traditional birth attendant. I am a Hawaiian healer. I'm not feeling confident in the exemption with native Hawaiian practices with Papa Olo Kahhi. I'm also speaking on behalf of the other cultures that have carried us when our kupuna had to go into hiding or were lost to the traditions of our own people and our own lambs. And I please, I ask you to please pass this. We are not just, it's not about me. It's about my children and my children's children. This is erasure of cultural practice. This is limiting access for mothers who know their options and still choose us because of who we are and the training that we have that is different from a Western perspective. We have different worldviews. We've tried for years to come together. I'm so, so excited at the possibility of actually being able to have collaborative care, which does not currently exist as we are not recognized and not honored in our home homeland. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. I stand on my written testimony, and I appreciate the opportunity to be heard today.
Thank you. Next, we have Midwives Alliance of Hawaii in opposition.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity to testify in opposition to HB 955-HD1. My name is Missy Chong. I'm the Maui representative for Midwives Alliance of Hawaii. I'm a licensed midwife. I received my midwifery training while living here in Maui and took my CPM exam through NARM at Maui College. And this was in preparation for the licensure that was upcoming. I've worked on, in birth work since 2005, though. So 100% we support women, mothers, families, and the right to birth how, where, with, whom, and where they wish to. We support community birth. Our organization focuses on this. We are all in agreement with these principles, and we would not support a law that took these rights away. This is why we ask you to vote no on HB 955-HD1 to ensure consumer protection for midwifery care. What you are truly being asked to decide today is whether we should let the law remain as is by the minimum educational degree of a GED and certificate in midwifery to practice as an independent primary healthcare provider in Hawaii or to reduce the minimum education to a GED only. No standardized accredited midwifery education. We believe Hawaii consumers, the public, deserve at minimum a midwife to have a GED and a certificate to practice. We ask you to vote no on HB 955-HD1 so that Hawaii continues to meet the national and international minimum requirements. Second, you're being asked to continue the exemption for unlicensed, licensed midwifery activity. We ask you to vote no so that consumers are protected by the closure of this exemption in 2023. Currently, unlicensed providers charge the same as licensed providers, and there's no differentiation for the consumer. As a recent incident occurred, someone brought the services, bought the services of what they thought was a midwife.
My apologies, can you summarize your testimony? Your two minutes, time limit is up.
I'm wrapping it up, no, sorry. It was unlicensed, who did not follow the exemption requirements. When the consumer had what she determined unacceptable care, her complaint with Rico became a fine against a naturopath because the person who claims to be a traditional midwife was in fact a naturopath. There's no clarity for consumers when we leave this exemption open. That's why we ask you to vote no. Thank you, and Melissa Chong, thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Island Mamas Midwifery in opposition.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Danny, and I live on the Hilo side of Big Island. I've been practicing midwifery in Hawaii since 2010. Also graduated from UH Hilo with a bachelor's degree in kinesiology. And I'm also a preceptor for the National Association of Registered Midwives and really believe in passing down midwifery knowledge through apprenticeship and would love to continue to uphold that model of teaching and learning. I also agree that people practicing midwifery without a license does not water down my credentials or skills, more that it's a safety issue that if people are practicing midwifery without basic competence, without proving basic competency, that dangerous things can happen. So accountability is a huge thing to me that we are all making ourselves accountable in this work for our actions and for our decisions that we make in the care that we're giving and that licensure provides a pathway for that. I also think that knowledge can be passed down through teaching and apprenticeship and lineage and also be proven by taking a test for certification. So my concern here is that not just traditional birth attendants will be exempt, but anyone who wants to call themselves a midwife will be exempt regardless of cultural background or lineage. And that we have midwives, white midwives from the mainland who have come here after losing their licenses in other states and are able to practice here and call themselves a midwife when they have a history of malpractice or poor outcomes. So that's a concern as well. I'm asking that you vote no to this bill.
Thank you. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Go ahead.
Aloha legislators, and I do apologize because I was going to stand on my written testimony, but I do need to just address a few things. My name is Laolani Teal. Both of my children were born with the assistance of traditional midwives, and I'm part of the, you know, the earlier generation of revitalizing these practices. I just want to say as a Hawaiian health researcher and a Hawaiian, somebody who works with Hawaiian health in the community, this is absolutely crucial. This is, we're talking about our most ancient practice. And while, you know, it is great to have these clinical skills, that's a wonderful thing for those who can attain them and for those who work that way. But having a license requirement that can only be attained outside of Hawaii? What craziness is that? How can that possibly be justified? That, I don't mean to put you on the spot, sovereign, but that's, that young girl right there is the girl that this is, that this measure is named after. She's in training right now in our traditional way. This is, this is our Kanaka future right there. And this, not passing this, not making traditional practice legal means that she won't have somebody to be able to teach her. And that means that that tradition breaks right there. So I ask all of you to look at this young person. She's amazing. This is how Hawaiian health comes back into our lahui, is through the birth of children like her and through their practice inside of the culture. So please pass this measure, mahalo.
Thank you. Are there any other persons here in the room to testify on this measure? Anyone on Zoom? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Aloha, thank you Chair and all of the Committee members. I stand on my written testimony in support of this measure. This is probably, I would say, my eighth year down here talking to all you folks. There's a lot of familiar faces. And I don't want to speak too long because, of course, there's a lot of testimony. There's years and years and years of testimony in support of this. This is what the people of Hawaii have been asking for over and over and over again. So I just really want to point that out, that this is the request of the constituents. These are the people that are voting for these, for you guys to be in these offices. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that Act 32 actually states that this act also exempts a separate category of birth attendants for a three-year period to allow this community to define themselves, develop common standards, accountability measures, and disclosure requirements. By the end of the three-year period, the legislature intends to enact statutes that will incorporate all birth practitioners and allow them to practice to the fullest extent of the law. That's what the law says. This is what we have enacted. And so now we are at that period. We tried in 2020, we tried in 2021, we tried in 2022. We have brought this over and over. We have done the requirements. We have brought this, and it keeps getting dismissed. This is the law that was created. We have to follow suit. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, and thank you for the opportunity to briefly share my testimony. I do want to say I wanted to stand on my testimony as well, but I just want to also acknowledge the fact that there was a comment that was made about apprenticeship and passing on knowledge through that way. And I am a PEP-trained midwife. I was trained through the apprenticeship model. I was able to do all of my training here in Hawaii, and I was able to pass a national exam that allowed me to become a CPM, a Certified Professional Midwife. And I'm ineligible for licensure. And I just want to point that out, that that is the path that I chose, thinking that I'd be able to be licensed. But because I'm not able to carry that, I come July 1, 2023, I will not be able to practice. But I do have the knowledge, so I just wanted to share that. And I am available for questions, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons to testify on this measure here or in Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, okay, on Zoom. Please go ahead in whatever order there is.
Hi, my name is Nina Millar, and I am a licensed midwife here on the Big Island as well. And I've been part of the Midwives Alliance since its conception in 1993, trying to bring the midwives across the islands together to work at supporting each other and also establishing a standard of care for Hawaii's families. I feel that it's important to say that 457-J is not trying to prohibit your traditional birth attendants from practicing, but we are looking at providing safety to the public with the licensed midwives that do practice the midwifery model of care and primarily provide home birth services to families. That they have accountability, and they are always expanding their education. When I started out, I apprenticed. I was called to be a midwife after the birth of my own children. I started out through an apprenticeship. I got this Certified Professional Midwifery Certificate when it became available, and I became licensed when that became available because midwifery is about growing, just like a... just like a pregnancy and a family that develops and expands and continues to serve the public. I think it's really important to always look towards acquiring more and more knowledge, and it's not limited to just cultural knowledge. They can still incorporate their cultural beliefs and learnings into that practice, into their midwifery practices. We're looking for expanding maternity care for families. And I just feel that it's being misinterpreted that we're stopping people from, you know, a cultural practice when that is not the intention. The intention is just really to provide-
Sorry, can you please summarize your testimony? Your two minutes is run out.
Thank you for hearing my testimony, and I ask that you oppose this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on Zoom, please.
Aloha, my name is Alohi Aia. I am a consumer here, one of those who has been asking for representation and for the ability to continue to use traditional birth attendants. Two things I would like to point out. One is that under the current Native Hawaiian exemption carved out for Papa Ololo Kahi, there is nobody who is serving under that exemption. So the women that I have chosen to serve me during birth are not covered even though they are Native Hawaiian. The second thing that I would like to point out is that when we talk about letting people know who they are getting when it comes to a birth, the requirements for traditional birth attendants as outlined under the law require that they disclose to the consumer not only their training, but any kinds of issues that they have had. And this actually goes beyond what is required of the licensed midwives. So if you want to talk about providing informed choice to the consumer, this law does that. And I think that that is one of the most important things that it does is that it outlines really what I think anybody who's serving a birthing woman should provide for them as far as information. I stand on my testimony. I'm thankful for your time and your energy, and I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next on Zoom.
Aloha, my name is Sarah Fajele, and I strongly support HB 955 and the preservation of traditional midwives. I come to you today as a mom of six children, five of which are girls, and have had four of those children at home because that is where I felt safe. During my pregnancies, my well-trained and well-educated traditional midwife, whom I trust with my life, encouraged me to maintain a good relationship with my OB. And I had decided to go with a certified nurse midwife as my medical backup at Pfizer. The one and only appointment that I had had with her was unpleasant because she used scare tactics upon me to try to birth in the hospital. And she had shared a scary story with me about a home birth to which I went home and researched myself. That particular case did not even happen in Hawaii, but rather in Texas, which I thought was interesting because Texas does require midwives to be licensed. Additional education does not make birth safer. It will only limit midwifery as a career choice to care providers who want to serve their communities. The Certified Midwife credential was created in 1994 in order to expand access to midwifery through multiple education pathways, as stated by the American College of Midwifery. So this certification was not created to make birth safer to begin with. This bill is wanted by the public, women and their partners. The only opposition appears to be from the medical community who have no traditional learning experience. Traditional midwifery includes knowledge and wisdom that has been passed on by generations, knowledge that my daughters deserve access to, information you can't learn from school or books. And it is as if the state is asking Western dance teachers to teach traditional hula. It is clear that pregnant, some pregnant women do not want the services of Western medical practitioners. And today I'm asking you to acknowledge the women that desire to incorporate that into their sacred private births. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you. Next on Zoom.
Aloha, my name is Maria Mendoza, and I'm testifying as a Maui mother in strong support of HB 955. We've heard from a lot of midwives today, so I'm here to offer my birth story in hopes to convey to you how very qualified traditional midwives are. I gave birth three months ago to a very healthy baby girl with the help of a traditional midwife. I found my midwife by word of mouth and sought her out specifically for her cultural training over some of the licensed midwives who I had interviewed. I saw both her and an OB-GYN during my pregnancy. My midwife worked by donation, which was the only way that my family could have afforded the quality of her care. At 28 weeks pregnant, I was denied care from my OB-GYN because I had expressed the desire to have a home birth. The difference between the quality of care that I received from the OB-GYN and my traditional midwife was significant. While my OB-GYN would spend a matter of minutes with me, my midwife would often spend three hours every time we met. After I gave birth, she came to my home to care for me for the next six weeks, cooking me meals, treating me with native herbs to help with my healing, teaching me how to breastfeed, et cetera. With the OB-GYN, there were only two brief postpartum checkups at three weeks and six weeks. When it came to my labor, unfortunately, my blood pressure shot up one day before my due date. My traditional midwife was knowledgeable and competent enough to make the call that I was no longer a low-risk pregnancy and that we had to go to the hospital. She acted responsibly and with the safety and concern of me and my family in mind, and she stayed with me as I labored for two days, even sleeping in her car in the parking lot. She supported me through many heartbreaking challenges with the physicians on duty, including when they denied me my placenta and stole my dignity in doing so. The support that I received from my midwife during the every phase of becoming a mother has directly contributed to the success that I have had in my postpartum and re-entering the workforce. Despite all of the trauma that I have experienced at the hospital, I have heard to thank for never experiencing any postpartum depression. All mothers deserve access to these midwives and should continue to have options on how we choose to birth. This is especially important for outer-island mothers like myself who only have one choice of hospital to birth at.
My apologies. Your two-minute timeline is up. Can you please summarize your testimony?
Yes, please support families like mine by supporting this bill. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you. Next on Zoom.
Aloha, Honorable Chair and Committee Members. My name is Daniela Martinez Guzman. I stand on my testimony in support of this bill as a licensed midwife. And I would like to just take a moment to read the support letter on behalf of MANA, which is the Midwives Alliance of North America. Due to time changes and the last minute of the hearing, they were not able to submit their testimony, so I have received permission to read it on their behalf. Dear CPC Committee, I'm writing to you on behalf of the Midwives Alliance of North America, which represents the largest body of out-of-hospital midwives in the United States. Our mission is as follows. The mission of the Midwives Alliance of North America is to unite, strengthen, support, and advocate for the midwifery community and to promote educational, economic, and cultural sustainability of the midwifery profession. The Midwives Alliance of North America strongly supports HB 955 HD1 to preserve the portfolio evaluation process pathway to becoming a Certified Professional Midwife. This competency-based model of certification is essential to ensuring that consumers of community birth services have access to a well-trained provider from their own community that meets established standards for care. The PEP pathway to the CPM credential is the original direct entry to midwifery equivalent to the CNM nursing pathway to midwifery credential. The strength of the PEP pathway to CPM lies in the competency-based education and clinical training, which can be accomplished in the community setting via practicing CPMs as preceptors. It deserves your support. Thank you for your consideration. Becky Coolidge, CPM, President interim of the Midwives Alliance of North America and the President of Illinois Council of Certified Professional Midwives. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on Zoom. Is it you?
Yeah. Aloha, everyone. My name is Dr. Alexandra Kusitu. I'm an alumna of UH Manoa, and my research and doctoral study and dissertation actually centers on home birth in Hawaii and covers some of the issues that you have been hearing of today. I'm also a home birth mom of two children, one of which was born in Hawaii and under the supervision and love and guidance of a traditional midwife in Hawaii. I'm in full support of this bill. The current literature on home birth shows that home birth is still an excellent choice for low-risk moms. And what's more, we find that in the data, choice of practitioner, choice of birth attendant, and especially culturally-aligned midwives are necessary to producing positive outcomes for mom and baby. You might have seen the Department of Health data, which shows that home birth and choice of practitioner actually don't have any adverse effects on maternal and infant outcomes. In fact, we might even assume from data, if you want to read my dissertation, if you have the time, that outcomes are actually more favorable when a consumer can choose her midwife and perhaps even her culturally-aligned midwife. So I know culturally throughout the world, we're kind of finding ourselves in a place of needing to respect cultural practices, consumer choices, and positive health outcomes for mom and baby. And I think it's in the best interest of the state of Hawaii, based on the data given, to preserve the choice of birth attendants and midwives for the women and the family of the islands. My data reflects this sentiment as well as my own experience as a home birth mom. Thank you all for supporting this bill. I am available for questions and any information you might need. Thanks.
Thank you. Next on Zoom.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. I am Dan Ferguson, a licensed home birth midwife on Maui. I've been attending home births for about 38 years. There's a lot of misinformation about midwifery in Hawaii being stated. See if I can get you more focused here. Understand that if this bill passes in its current iteration, four things will be true. One, the state will have gone from mandatory licensure to voluntary. Many of the currently licensed midwives will not renew. Two, the state will have lowered the minimum standard of education for the profession of midwifery in Hawaii. Three, the state is agreeing that traditional attendance cannot be defined, and they can sell their services to the public without oversight or regulation. Four, the public will have no means to file a complaint if a mother or baby are harmed. The state will have failed to protect the public. The HB 955, there's a request for the NARM PEP evaluation pathway to be allowed as accreditation. The PEP was intentionally not included in the licensure law because it is not the highest standard of education recommended. Regardless of that, my questions are, if the PEP is allowed as a pathway, will all of the women asking for exemption to get, will they all get their CPM, take their midwifery exam, and agree to licensure? Or will they continue to ask for an exemption and seek to make exemption permanent for themselves? Also, if this is the process they are asking for, how many have completed it in the four years since the licensure bill was passed? And finally, I'd like to say I do not support the extension of the exemption. This group has had four years and a task force paid for by the state to figure out what they wanted. And what they're essentially asking for is more exemption.
My apologies. Your two minutes is up. Can you please summarize your testimony?
Okay, yeah. I just summarized by saying if they want the PEP, take the next three years till 2025 and complete the PEP, or two years. Complete the PEP, come back and see if they want to be licensed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you guys so much for this today. And I just want to say that, you know, cultural practices are super important, and here we are in Hawaii. People that are practitioners of any kind are so important. Midwifery is absolutely essential in all capacities here in Hawaii. And to have so many people that are practicing here and want to criminalize people that are from here that don't know the language, have no relationship with the culture, and are willing to participate in erasure, I'm just totally disturbed. I'm so sorry. I wasn't going to give much of a testimony, but I'm just really sad about what is happening. So I just want to thank you for bringing this. And that HB 955 is absolutely essential to protect midwifery and birthing families. The right to culturally-appropriate care, to choose a traditional birth attendant, and the portfolio evaluation process is essential. Every culture has variations of midwifery, and please do not force American assimilation of care as the standard. All cultural midwives' wisdom should be welcomed in Hawaii, as it once was. We see Maui has passed a resolution 2328 and fully supports, and we are aligning HB 95 with the Oregon law, which allowed traditional midwifery. We can see as you look through the historical documents of all communities in Hawaii and America, there were thousands of midwives prior to 1920. If these laws were created to make people safe, why is America, as a first-world developed nation, has the least midwives, the highest mortality and morbidity, the most expensive healthcare, and the highest intimate partner violence when white and white domination in maternal health? HRS 457 without exemptions will continue to enforce assimilation of culture and lack of healthcare standards for birthing people. If these regulations are for safety and a solution, why do we only have 2% of midwives, currently predominantly white, leaving most people out in a nation that has the most dangers to give birth? We should be looking at other nations. The truth is that all these regulations have never done anything but cause erasure. Laws of criminalization of healthcare practitioners create cultural genocide of rooted community birth attendants.
My apologies. Your two-minute timeline is up. Can you please summarize your testimony?
Okay, thank you. Can you please just support HB 955? We need to change this maternal health crisis that's happening in America, and we need all midwives. We need all cultural practitioners, and we need healthcare. And we need to unpack the danger and the harm that's happening in the medical-industrial complex that is harming and killing 80% by unnecessary deaths. That's what we need to focus on, quit focusing on this criminalization of midwives. I'm sorry to be so, but I'm just, we need midwives in all capacity in Hawaii. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on Zoom.
Hi, my name is Susannah Kinsey. I am a science teacher. I am an ordained minister. I'm a home birth mother of three, and I'm a traditional birth attendant. This law affects me directly, and it's a step in the right direction that the exemption was, is to push to 2025. It would be nice to have it removed altogether. I've served many families in Hawaii, and they've chosen me as their midwife because I believe that they are, the mother is the most important person in a birth. I've been trained by a traditional midwife. I've been attending births for 10 years. I don't want to do this illegally. I want to be able to continue offering my services to the women that choose me as their midwife, but I want to be able to do it legally. I have tried to pursue a CPM through the pathways, through the law that was passed three years ago. Unfortunately, due to financial constraints and the fact that I was not, my family, my family is here, I was not able to complete this. I've found it impossible to complete. And so it's not a valid choice for me. However, I've been attending births for many years, and these women share their sacred, empowered experience and honor me by inviting me to this birth. Please support HB 955 so that people like me, and there's only very, there's only a few people that consider themselves a traditional birth attendant in Hawaii, so that people like me can continue to offer our services legally. Thank you very much for hearing this bill. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next on Zoom.
Aloha, my name is Rachel Kornell Strum, and I am the first licensed midwife in the state of Hawaii, as well as a member of the Hawaii Home Birth Task Force. First and foremost, the task force was shut down untimely because of COVID. We didn't get to finish all of our meetings with the people that we needed to. That would have been helpful, but irregardless, I just want to say that I'm on the Big Island, and there- But irregardless, I just want to say that I'm on the Big Island, and there are not enough midwives on the Big Island to service the number of women that are needing home birth. There are rural areas, especially the Puna District, where they have access to two licensed midwives. And there are women calling me every week, asking me to drive there, and it's three hours plus away from my home. We need to preserve pathways to licensure to, the PEP process for the CPM, the majority of the midwives that have spoken here today, we are all PEP midwives. There are very, there's only a couple of midwives that have achieved their CPM credential through the MEAC college process. We need to allow traditional birth attendants to be able to attend the women that fall into the gaps. These are the women that are most desperate for help, and they deserve to have safe care. Oregon is a great model that you can look to. They've had an exemption for traditional midwives for decades, and it's gone well for them. So I'm just asking, I will stand on my written testimony, but I'm asking that you also take into consideration that there are very desperate women in rural areas, and without access to midwives, traditional birth attendants, these women historically have unassisted home births, and those don't always go well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other testifiers on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Members, we have several written testimony in support. Maui County Council Chair Alex Lee, Hawaii County Council District 2 Councilmember Jen Kagiwata. Can you please, on Zoom, please? Thank you. Support testimony from Malamana Pua'o Haumea, Aoki Birthing Care, JB Entertainment Corporation, UP Country Doctor, Living Adjusted Family Wellness Center, North American Registry of Midwives, McCally Taylor LLC, Ho'o Pa'e Pono Peace Project, Hawaii Midwifery Council, Best Birth Hawaii, Hawkins Designs, Hemsley Familia, God Trust. And we have opposition testimony from Zen Den Midwifery, and comments from the Grassroots Institute of Hawaii. Members, are there any questions? Representative Li.
Just a request to the testifier who has that dissertation on home births in Hawaii. I'd like to request, I have a copy of the dissertation provided to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, questions? Representative Onyewu.
Chair, Department of Health.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I know you're probably not prepared to answer this question, but can we also get the data on mortality and incidence prior to the enactment of this law? And mortality and incidence after the enactment of this law?
Yes, I'll see what I can get, and I'll send it to the chair for the committee's review.
As related to home births?
Home births, right. Not all infant mortality, just home birth. Yes.
And then for the gal that said she was, oh, thank you. You had received certification on the mainland, but you're not able to practice in Hawaii?
I have my certification.
Yeah, if you could please come up. Hi, thank you for being here. I wanted clarification. What certification do you have?
I am a CPM, Certified Professional Midwife. So I sat for the NARM exam. So the state requires, in order to obtain licensure, you need to have a CPM certification. So there's two pathways to be able to obtain that CPM certification. One is through the PEP process, which is the apprenticeship training, which I did. The other is through enrollment in the MEAC-accredited schools, which is the one that is a lot, a lot more challenging to obtain, living in Hawaii. And through my training, I did over 100 births. I was able to do a lot of clinical, hands-on skills. And the exam that both PEP and MEAC students take is the exact same exam. So as long as you can show your competency through that exam, then you are given that certification of a CPM. There are many other states in the U.S., over 35 states that actually honor the PEP certification as well.
Okay, so you have that.
I have that, yeah.
But you're not able to practice?
I'm not able to be licensed to practice. If I was to practice here in Hawaii, I have to call myself a traditional birth attendant because, because I am unlicensed.
Okay. But what stops you from being licensed if you're already certified?
I want to be licensed. It's just that in the law, it states that I have to go back to school, and through the MEAC schooling process, which is the only other, which is the only option available, is to have that MEAC certification from the school.
To get a current license? You have to redo all of your education?
Yes, exactly.
So there's no pathway for someone who is already certified somewhere else that meets the requirements in Hawaii to be, to get a license?
Correct. None that I've found. I've been looking.
So that's a different issue for you.
It's in the bill.
Right? Because, oh, okay.
That is, yes, that is in the bill. We're trying to incorporate that as well.
Okay, okay. So it would allow you, if we pass this bill?
Exactly.
To get a license?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And that, did the gal with the baby leave?
No, I'm here.
Oh, okay. If you could please, Chair, if I might?
Please go ahead.
The mother, yeah.
Hi.
Sorry. Hi. You made a comment that everything that was required by Act 32 in 2019, or I'm sorry, Act, yeah, Act 32 to 2019, was done. The development of common standards, accountability measures, and disclosure requirement.
Yes, all of those were discussed in the task force. We've presented bills for the past three or four years, offering various options around what the task force had concluded, and we have just been shut down every year, even though we have actually met all of those requests and requirements.
Okay, so let me understand this. So the task force developed and defined common standards.
So with H-I-H-B-C, and in correlation, do you want to come and clarify, please? Thank you.
Hi, yes, thank you for asking. I was the task force chair, and so there was recommendations that were put forth for the traditional midwife to be able to continue to practice. And we have done so every year, putting that forth. And so that's why we're back again this year, trying to continue to push something past a first committee. So we made it past a first committee.
Okay, I understand why you're here, but I don't see what the standards are, or what's the accountability measures?
The accountability measures are the informed disclosure form that are required for them to verbally and written, writtenly disclose. They're also required to disclose all training and education, if they have been in any types of criminal or civil issues. So there's not, they're not just flying in here and with a messy record. They're required to disclose all of that. And as far as standards go, we have the National Aboriginal Council of Midwives that did submit testimony to with their core competencies in full support of the birth attendant.
Okay. Okay, and this is what you guys have been trying to get passed?
Yes, and this, that's why this year, we are, this is the first year we're not using the title midwife, or asking for that. We are requesting the title birth attendant.
Okay, so you're not looking for licensure?
No, we are looking for continued regulation of the birth attendant. Right now, the birth attendant is regulated, and so we're asking for continued regulation of that. And this is not voluntary licensure. Chapter 26H for the Licensing Act says, "full licensure or other restrictions when it comes to the profession." And that's what this birth attendant exemption is doing. It's continuing regulation of them.
Okay.
And we do have data in our task force report from 2017, 2018, and I also have Department of Health data I requested for 2019 through mid-2021, because that's when we requested it last year from Department of Health.
Okay, and this bill calls for an extended sunset?
Yes. Oh, no, it require, it's calling for an extension of the date. So in 2023, traditional birth attendants will expire. And so in the first committee, Chair Biladi pushed the date of expiration to the sunset date of July 1, 2025.
Right, right. So this bill has a sunset.
It does.
So if this is a, another method, or a different path to allow for birthing attendants, then shouldn't you also be asking that we move, we remove the sunset? Because if not, you'll be here in two years.
Yes, I'm tired. My, my four-year-old falls asleep eating Cheetos, standing up on the couch now, because every year I've been here.
Well, I, I just wanted to bring that up, because...
Yeah, and I just want, thank you for pointing that out. And in 2017, the Sunrise Report that was done, the auditor actually set forth two recommendations. The first was, "full licensure of all midwives." And he recognized traditional midwives in there. And he said, "You cannot benefit one sector. You have to, you have to license all of them." So then his second recommendation was, "I would, I would recommend the legislature examine if you should even use a private midwifery organization, because if you do that, you unnecessarily and unfairly create a competitive advantage for one of the sectors of the midwives." And that's what's happening right now. And so what's beautiful about HB 955 and even Act 32 is it took all the midwives, and it put them in different ways of being regulated. So we have licensure, we have birth attendant regulation, we have papa'ola loka'i, we have the other licensed professions. So there, the whole profession is, is regulated. And that's what the Chapter 26H said we're supposed to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you want the sunset?
Yes, please. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Members, are there any other questions?
Any other questions?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Did anybody submit testimony on behalf of ACOG? I saw a couple testifiers that mentioned they are members of ACOG, but I don't, I didn't, I don't think I saw anything on behalf of ACOG. Is that correct? Is there anybody here on behalf of ACOG?
Doesn't appear so.
Are the, are the two people, are the two ACOG members, Ronnie Taxiera or Angel Wiley, here? Okay, if not, then I have questions for Ma. Midwives Alliance of Hawaii?
Yes, go ahead. Oh, there's Leah.
Hi, thank you so much for being here. My question was for Missy, who said she's a CPM.
Okay, yes.
And she was also testifying on behalf of Ma.
Correct. Leah, the board president, is now off work and able to answer any follow-up questions. I'm welcome to answer any questions that are direct about my testimony.
Wonderful, thank you. Yeah, so your testimony said that you're a CPM. Did you attend a MEAC-accredited school?
I did. I started my education when I was on the mainland. My husband is born and raised here. When he retired from the Air Force, we moved back home. That was eight years ago. And I started my education after already providing traditional midwifery services on the mainland from 2008, and attended school in 2012. I chose the traditional midwifery program, and that is, was a MEAC-approved school. And I took a leave of absence when I moved here, and was able to drop back into that education here local, and then finished my training, had to repeat some hours here because they expired over that period of time, some clinical hours. So I was able to get all of that done here, and also test here local, which was something I had to figure out how UH could get the permission to do the testing, become a testing center and that sort of thing. So I went through all of that process, and now it's a, a testing facility for MEAC.
Thank you. So I'm a little bit confused about Ma's testimony that claims that HB 955 would require only a GED in order to be a licensed midwife? And you had compared that with a current law that states you need a GED plus a certificate in midwifery?
Yeah, and so there's no standardized education, such as a bachelor's, master's, or associate's degree that's required for your CPM. And so the requirement would be that you have to have gotten your GED or your, your equivalent high school diploma, and then you would do an apprenticeship-style education from there. If you do a MEAC-approved school, and it's the same idea, we're just asking, instead of getting all of your education from the person that you apprenticed with, that you're doing a standardized didactic studies with an online program for one year, and then you do your, you still do the exact same apprenticeship style where, in your location, with preceptors around where you live for the other half of it. We're just saying, standardize the bookwork portion.
Isn't the PEP pathway a certificate in midwifery, though? So your testimony claimed that HB 955 would require only a GED and not a certificate in midwifery?
So the, I, I think Leah might be able to explain that a little bit better, because I just tried to, and obviously I didn't do a great job.
Okay, great, go ahead.
Leah, can you hop in?
Yeah, so the PEP, so to what Missy was saying, is there's no required educational degree for midwifery, for CPMs. And the PEP process is not an accredited education. You don't receive a certificate in midwifery. So you do need to have a minimum of a GED to be eligible to apply for the PEP pathway, and then you do basic paperwork that you're completing with your preceptor. And the preceptor does have minimum requirements to qualify to be your preceptor, the same exact requirements that are required for a MEAC-accredited school to be a preceptor. So that's why it can be the same for both. But you do not receive a certificate in midwifery when you complete the PEP pathway.
So you, sorry, so the PEP pathway culminates in the NARM exam, and you become a certified professional midwife, but you don't receive a certificate, a certificate of midwifery? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So just to clarify that a little bit, if this makes more sense, like, because I'm a certified nurse midwife, APRNs, like, and nurses used to do diploma programs, apprenticeship through hospitals, and like, they would get a diploma through that, but the NARM PEP process doesn't give you that diploma. And like, now we're required to have minimum, like, for myself, minimum graduate education.
What does it give you? When you complete the PEP pathway, and you get, you complete the NARM exam, and you become a certified professional midwife, what is it called, then, if it's not a certificate?
Well, so just to clarify, like, you don't get a certificate for your education, right? So like, I have, as an example, my midwifery education, I went to school for that, so I have a master's that is separate from my board certification. So people go through the NARM PEP pathway, and they qualify to sit for the national exam, then they do, and they pass it, then they do get their national certification, but that does not mean...
So they do get a certificate?
Education minimum, like, degree granted.
But they do get a certificate of midwifery?
No, they get a certified professional midwife.
Certificate?
Yes, but that is not...
Thank you, that's all.
That's not their education.
Okay, members, any other questions? Actually, I do have a question for DCCA. So we heard from several testifiers about disclosure of credentials, of educational backgrounds, traditional or otherwise. Who enforces this? Or is there an enforcement mechanism?
There are. We would be the...
We would be the enforcers, even though they're exempt from licensure. Their exemption has what they must disclose to their clients. We have the forms posted on our website. It does indicate it in the law.
So those who are exempt also have, must disclose?
Well, those are the, those who are exempt from the license requirements have to comply with this.
Right.
If, in other words, if they don't comply with these lists of disclosures and what they cannot advertise, that kind of thing, then they're no longer exempt. And they become unlicensed.
Have there been cases over the past?
Not that I'm aware of, not that's been reported directly to.
So someone would have to report this to DCCA under RICO, I would say.
So we have a disclosure form, for example, if the birth attendant does not provide that to the client and the client finds out that that is a requirement maybe from another birth attendant, then they can report it.
Okay, and I think we will have more information DOH on this, but from you, DCCA as well, have you received any reports, concerns about the midwife licensure or those who have been exempt from the licensure process over the past few years?
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. Any, members, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next measure, HB 663. This is relating to breast cancer screening. Increases the categories of women required to be covered for mammogram screenings. Requires existing health insurance mandate for coverage of low-dose mammogram, mammography to include digital mammography and digital breasts, oh gosh, tomo synthesis. Defines digital breasts, oh gosh, tomo synthesis effective June 30th, 3000. First to testify, we have Department of Health with comments.
Good afternoon, stalwart members of the committee and Chair and Vice Chair Lola Irvin. I'm representing Dr. Kenny Fink. The Department of Health offers comments. We do defer to the Department of Commerce and Consumer Protection and the Office of the State Auditor and have provided hopefully some convenient links for you to see in terms of what is required for the social and fiscal assessment and also what is being amended. We offered comments to also let you know that the Department of Health has a federally-funded program for breast and cervical cancer screening for women who are underserved, uninsured or underinsured. And for the services that we provide, we do rely on the U.S. Preventive Services Task Force. So the women are screened from age 50, except for women in their 40s with a history of breast cancer in their families. And in doing so, then, we would be in conflict in terms of then the reimbursements we would provide for subcontractors who provide the screening for women. Anyways, I hope you find the links are helpful. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you. Next, we have DCCA with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, members of the committee, Gordon Ito, Insurance Commissioner, testifying on behalf of DCCA. Before, basically, the division wants to make clear that we're supportive of access and any efforts to improve breast cancer screening rates. With that, the department offers written comments. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Medical Association in support.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. My name is Dr. Beth England. I'm co-chair of the Public Policy Committee for the Hawaii Medical Association. We stand on our written testimony and support and are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Radiological Society in support. Are they here? Okay. This is.
Good afternoon.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, good. Hi, I'm Dr. Martha Weedman. I'm a radiologist with over 30 years' experience in breast cancer screening and diagnosis. I'm representing the Hawaii Radiological Society and I'm on the Big Island. I have submitted written testimony, but I'd like to highlight that with some, some points that I'd like to make. One is that there is a great chance of saving many lives from breast cancer screening if we adopt this bill. We know that there are many women of Native Hawaiian ancestry, as well as Filipino and Pacific Islanders who stand a much higher incidence of getting breast cancer than other ethnic groups in this state. And there are some opportunities here that we could have for a risk assessment if we applied them. And this bill addresses that. Risk assessment is done traditionally for women age 40 and over when they get their annual mammograms is applied by the American College of Radiology. However, this bill also allows for risk assessment to be applied for women age 30 to 39 and even above who have above-average risk, which would include the men, the groups I just mentioned. Risk assessment includes things like breast density, prior reproductive health, family history, et cetera. And this would give an opportunity to not only find and identify these people, but also stratify them and find out if they need additional imaging such as MRI of the breast or breast ultrasound, which also can aid in diagnosis and also has the advantage of not providing radiation. So I am in favor of this bill. I hope it is passed. It has my full support. And in addition, I do believe that medical providers should be reimbursed for providing these services to these women. I think it will add a great deal of help to the women who need.
Apologies, your two-minute time limit is up. Please summarize your testimony.
I will summarize this by saying I am in support of this bill and I hope this information is helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have HMSA with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair Don Karisu on behalf of HMSA. I just want to stand on our written testimony, writing comments, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Members, we also have supportive testimony from the Hawaii Woman Lawyers and two individuals. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 1217. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. My apologies. We'll be moving back to HB 663, HD1. We do have one additional testifier, Scott Grosscrudz, Hawaii Radiological Society in Support. Please go ahead. Oh, okay, never mind, he's not here. Okay, moving on. HB 1217, HD1 relating to medical cannabis prohibits the cultivation, production, manufacture, distribution, possession, or dispensation of medical cannabis except by qualifying patients, qualifying out-of-state patients, they're authorized, primary caregivers, or medical cannabis dispensaries. Restricts the number of qualifying patients who may use a grow site to five. Prohibits the receipt of cannabis or cannabis products as compensation for acting as a primary caregiver to a qualifying patient effective June 30th, 3000. First to testify, we have Department of Health in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The Department of Health stands in strong support. This measure will strengthen the dispensary licensing system and I'm here for comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Aloha Green Holdings, Inc. in support.
Zoom?
Yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and committee members. I'm Tai Chang, President of Aloha Green Holdings, one of Hawaii's eight licensed medical cannabis dispensaries. We support the intent of House Bill 1217, HD1, but have comments. Committee members, to be clear, Aloha Green Apothecary unequivocally supports the patient's right to grow. Personal home grows must be protected as a right. Nevertheless, the intent of the caregiver growing rights under 329 was to provide access to affordable medicine for those who could not grow on their own while the dispensary program was built up. This is why there is a caregiver sunset built into 329. At the beginning, dispensaries charged high prices for valuable medicine as the industry dealt with setback upon setback, delay upon delay. Today, Aloha Green Holdings, one of the largest licensed growers in Hawaii, has the lowest prices in Hawaii. We offer prices as low as $199 for an ounce of dried flower, $35 eighths, and $30 for a half-gram oil cartridge. All are lab-tested, all are labeled and in childproof packaging. A quick search online shows that the average cost of one ounce of cannabis is about $266 an ounce on the mainland. Our prices are less than some mainland state dispensaries. The affordability argument is no longer persuasive, though we concede we cannot grow cannabis cheaper than an outdoor, untested and unregulated grow. 329 dispensary licensees were allowed only 3,000 plants, or 300 patients' worth if growing, per cultivation location. We agree it's reasonable to regulate a product or service when another person relies on another person's work. There should be no controversy to regulate the supply of a medicine. This is a loophole which has allowed unlimited patients to designate one location in glaring, in glaring view of the law. And there is a temptation for the commercialized sale of cannabis by caregivers. We suggest that the DOH be given the right to authorize caregiver grows that are greater than five, as five is just an arbitrary number, when there is reason and it makes sense.
My apologies, your two-minute time limit is up. Please summarize your testimony.
Maybe five patients is the correct number, maybe 300, maybe even 1,000. I stand by my written testimony, which contains my suggested amendments. Thank you very much. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Kira Oahu in support. Okay, seeing that they're not here, we'll be moving on to Maine Craft Cannabis Association in opposition. Okay, we'll be moving on to Care Waialua Farm in opposition.
Well, I have a new struggle, home birthing, and that's an amazing thing. So I've learned a lot since I've been here. Thank you for that. Chair, Vice Chair, I'm learning how to do this, representatives. My name is Jason Hanley. I am the owner of Care Waialua, a 1,000-patient-based farm on the North Shore of Oahu. It's a two-acre spot, 20,000 square feet of flowering, locked greenhouse. My farm has been, I've opened it up to everybody. Members Gov. Green, Senator De La Cruz, Kedani, lots of people have been to my farm and even as recent as the task force coming, opening up to Department of Tax. I have nothing to hide here. This is medical patients growing their medicine on my farm and they have nowhere else to do it. Why do I have 1,000 patients on my farm? Because there are no other farms like mine for people to grow their medicine, educate themselves and learn how to do this stuff. It's very obvious. Something that is kind of disappointing is to hear DOH come here and say, hey, this will strengthen the dispensary licensing. This is not about strengthening dispensary licenses. This is about 329 card rights. I have a whole document in here where we follow the rules to the best we can. There's so much going on this farm, it's amazing, and I invite anybody to this farm to find fault with it. It is truly amazing. I just want to hit a couple of points and I won't drive you guys around, I know it's been a long day. Our farm is secured with alarms, it's a locked greenhouse. We do test our flower, our patients test our flower. We're all going through the process of growing good flower. It's very easy to do if you know what you're doing. It's very easy to test your edibles. All this stuff is like right here in front of us. And, you know, I would just like to make a comment that, you know, Mr. Inoshi brought up. We're talking about best practices moving forward here, whether it's medical patients or whether it's the cannabis industry. We are not using best practices here. We are making up our own things in the state and it's causing us a lot of problems. We have opened up our site for compliance and we've been nothing but stressed out. We've had Department of Public Safety come in on our spot. We've had DOH come on our spot with Department of Public Safety, take plants that visibly had tags getting ready to go on small clones.
My apologies, can you summarize your testimony?
I can summarize, no reports, nothing. This has all been going on forever, guys. We invite you, we're honest people. I'm a 20-year-retired U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and Bay Area biologist for Hawaii and we're here and we're doing it right and we're stoked. Thank you. Aloha.
Next, we have Remi Maylot in opposition. Are they here on Zoom?
No.
Okay, we'll be moving on to Ann Chung in support. Next, we have Derek Shirley, Medical Patients in opposition. Yes, please go ahead.
Back to Chair and Committee members, my name is Derek Shirley. I'm a medical cannabis lobbyist. I'm currently 5,000 miles away, living in the state of Maine. I've represented many patients and caregivers in multiple states, focusing on patient rights and caregivers' rights on state and local levels. And I'm here today to speak against 1217. A little bit about myself, I'm a medical cannabis patient who practices the right to home grow, participates in the caregiver system in Maine, a proud cannabis felon for four ounces of flower. Later on, went sat on a Maine Cannabis Coalition Board for four years, where we wrote laws, passed laws through our committees later in our Senate. Sometimes we even killed bills when necessary. I sit on my town zoning board and appeals. I started in my cannabis journey in my hometown of Pennsylvania, using the traditional market, moved to Arizona where I just relied on limited dispensaries, and then I moved to Maine, which has a similar program to you, to your guys in Hawaii. I personally think especially Section 7.1 really, really restricts patients' rights to medicine, only allowing patients to buy medicine, limits, limited to dispel license is a disaster and we've seen that all over. Most recently, look at Cure Leaf, who had to leave three states, not being able to compete unless they control the licenses which you have in your state. Here in Maine, our medical program is made up of 70% of small businesses and we plan to preserve that as much as we can. I think the people of Hawaii value small businesses and small, small farmers as mu- as much as we do in Maine. It just blew my mind particularly how we could buy medicine directly from the farmer. The farmers encourage us to grow our own medicine because they know the power of growing our own medicine. And I just really appreciate you guys giving me the time to speak. And I think it's really, really important you sit down with your stakeholders and listen to what they want, because this is a very serious, powerful industry. I just want to thank you for your time and I'll take absolutely any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Oh, okay, please go ahead.
Aloha.
We'll, we'll take in-person testimony first and we'll move to Zoom later. Thank you.
Aloha, Chair and everyone. Thank you for having, providing this opportunity for us to testify. My name is Abir Amir Dash and I am a medical cannabis patient first and a medical, and a medical cannabis provider second. I strongly oppose this bill as it takes away the rights of patients and limits access to medicine. This bill aims to criminalize grow collective that not only provides safe and affordable medicine, but also offers community services to remote areas and disadvantaged communities that need it the most. They offer an added layer of support to already overloaded government support systems. If this bill passes, the people you are denying access to are the kapuna who have no access to get to a dispensary, the patients who are on limited income of $1,000 or more that have, that have to account to every penny they have to spend, and the other disadvantaged people with no shelter who are, who are helped off the streets, who are helped to kick off their addictions with the help of cannabis and the support of these communities that provides. I've witnessed it myself and I was very, very impressed with it. And as well, I want to add that these local farmers provide safe and affordable medicine contrary to the misinformation being circulated that only dispensary cannabis is safe. I dream of a day that I'm actually able to go to a farmer's market where I can actually pick my own medicine myself. And dispensaries do offer a great value for, for medical cannabis communities, but only serve a select group of patients and that is not fully representative of the whole medical cannabis community in Hawaii. This bill, if it passes, it will fuel the illicit market that you guys name as illicit. And I would also want to highlight that all the tax benefits and all that, that's being, those are all inflated numbers. There are actually, Canopy is one of the biggest cannabis providers is actually going out of. those are all inflated numbers. There are actually, Canopy is one of the biggest cannabis providers is actually going out of, they're losing forty percent of their revenue because of the illegal market. This is world news. And it's also disheartening and disappointing to see this bill being championed by representatives who swore to protect and uphold the rights, but in reality are representing corporations. I ask for you to all come together and introduce a bill that will provide equity for all, for all, and incorporate and legitimize our local farmers who have been providing cannabis before, way, way before dispensaries ever existed. I hold you all accountable to the words of our state seal. The life of the land is perpetuated in righteousness. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. I want to testify as well. Thank you, okay.
Aloha Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama and Committee Members. Thank you for hearing testimony today on this crucial bill. My name is May Fui Maonopoe. I am a resident of Pa'ua and a family nurse practitioner. I have over twenty-three years of experience in healthcare and I'm also a certified, certified, certifying provider. I'm here to testify in strong opposition to HB twelve seventeen. According to a study by the Hawaii Cannabis Industry Association, only twenty-six percent of Hawaiians three-two-nine cardholders go to the dispensaries. Seventy-five percent of them get their medicine from illicit markets. This bill is a direct attempt to create a pathway that criminalizes those seventy-five percent of three-two-nine cardholders and create profit for the eight license holders. In testimony at the last health committee, we heard much talk about the illicit market, the black market, and how they provide safe, untested and unregulated cannabis. I have a couple of comments about that. In an independent study done by Dr. Clip Otto and Peter Oshiro, the head of the Food and Safety Branch for the Health Department, our dispensary vape cartridges had high levels of ethanol and some had lead. They also have engaged in a practice known as remediation. When a product fails testing, it is typically treated in order to pass and then is able to pass and get sold to consumers without their knowledge. So for them to say that they are the only people that creates safe medicine in our state, I pause and wonder if this is true. We heard testimony from dispensaries stating that card stacking is proliferating our community and is a considerable threat. I would argue that card stacking is the most Polynesian way to grow and distribute cannabis. Historically, we have always learned to grow, we've always grown together, harvest and created medicine. Most of these grow sites are not criminals. Most of these are families and friends growing together and sharing the heavy burden of cultivating plant medicine. Many patients create and share their cannabis products for many different reasons. Some include cost, allergies, diet, product preferences. Criminalizing this practice would be wrong and should be taken out completely. Inspections by the Department of Health should remain voluntary and allow patients to make necessary changes to remain in compliance. In conclusion, this bill aimed at card stacking and the so-called illicit market, but what it really does is it revictimizes our community which has already suffered enough from the war on drugs. This bill attempts to force patients to have to buy from dispensaries and it's ethically and morally wrong. I strongly encourage a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And I understand we have one person on Zoom to testify on this measure. Please go ahead.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Appreciate you allowing me to testify on this measure. I was born with a birth defect and it was only treatable by cannabis. And if cannabis right now has been on a federal level, it's been legalized for research purposes. The Cannaboy Research and Medical Marijuana Act was signed by President Biden. And cannabis growing, like the experience of, it's called the antidepressant cow in Cambodia, just farming itself is a therapeutic process. So the dispensary's testimony that two hundred dollars is a good price, you can also Google that you can good, good quality cannabis for one hundred dollars a pound from California. And that is being shipped over here. So the dispensary's price is far more expensive than growing your own, far more expensive than the black market that will continue to outcompete it. And it's so disappointing to hear both the testimony today from Department of Health supporting the dispensaries. I remember when the legislature supported the patients and the patients' rights to grow. So I would just beg you to continue to support the patients and not the for-profit oligarch of this monopoly system where they're providing high costs, low quality and they're all about the money. I could say more inside baseball about some of those members, but cannabis.
Sorry, can you please summarize your testimony?
It's medicine. It's something that is far over-regulated and misunderstood. And I appreciate the ability to talk and the ability to talk on this issue. Mahalo.
Thank you. And I understand there's one person here who would want to testify. Please go ahead.
How you doing? My name is Dos Santos Douglas Marquez, but you can call me Sam. I'm an American. So I'm from Brazil. I served fifteen years in the Marine Corps and the infantry. And I suffer from like PTSD, anxiety, depression and everything else. And I've taken twenty-six different pills from the VA. I've taken medications from the military themselves. And the only thing that I can say that actually works for myself, because as I said, I used to take twenty-six pills. I'm at four pills today due to the fact of cannabis. I am a cannabis connoisseur and people want to say it's not a medicine. People say it's a drug, whatever. You go ahead, tell me Tylenol is a drug then. Because the last time I checked, Tylenol destroys the inside of your body. The last time I checked cannabis does nothing but heal you. The only defectancy that people can say is they see you smoking. And when they see you smoking, they attract that to tobacco. I'm sorry, but there's other versions of utilizing this product. You can use it in food as I do because I suffer from Crohn's disease. And that has helped me take remission and everything. I have had no problem since I've had cannabis, except for the fact when I got food poisoning. Now, I own a farm. It's called Team Relief. We're here for the people, not for these big, big growers. We're mom and pop. You're talking about trying to control all these people's farms and stuff like that. Let me ask you this. So if there is this urban farmers bill that says no discrimination, how are we going to discriminate on this crop? So I'm against it a hundred percent and I stand for the people. I do not stand for like Aloha Green, how they trying to say, oh, it's better for the people. How? Half of those people can't even make it to your destination. Half of those people can't even afford your prices. You're going to tell me?
Sorry, sir, your two minutes is up. Can you please summarize?
Okay, I do not, I do not support this bill at all and I don't think anybody should and I think you should rewrite it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Please go ahead. Nora.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much representatives for being here and hearing our plights about this bill. I'm in opposition to it. My name is Mylee Gray. I am a long time from the seventies. My husband and I were the one and only, the two only people who stood up for the medical use of marijuana and are with our friends and fellow professionals worried that we were going to be imprisoned or harmed because of our support of medical use. I find myself now from my twenties now into my, to sixty-nine now and I am a victim of these laws still yet. First it was my kapunas and now I am in their boat, in their canoe. And it's difficult. And I agree with everyone that has stood up and spoken about what the benefits are. I, I feel like DOH is being given the full green light to weaponize themselves with the help of the Department of Safety, which is not needed. And this all starts from the top, which laws are beginning with the federal classification schedule one with heroin. It dictates state and local positions and hence criminalizes on all levels still yet, giving unneeded and unnecessary monies and manpower, the ability to come into one's home like the SS and their property and to make trouble. Okay? And so I, I am completely, I'm completely opposed and I'm so tired of our medical rights being circumvented, literally circling back to criminalization some way, somehow, and this bill is doing that. Now, if we're going to have regulations, that's fine. We have a taxation thing that should be handled.
My apologies. Can you please summarize your testimony? Thank you.
Sure. We could, we could really benefit from a law that helped us to collect money instead of spending money on weaponizing DOH. And I appreciate your attention and everyone here. Aloha to all of you folks and mahalo nui. And I hope that you folks will reconsider this completely because this is wrong and we have to stop doing these things in, in America. Okay? We have American laws here and so we need to do something positive. Mahalo folks.
Thank you. Okay, any other persons here to testify on this measure? Please go ahead.
Hi, hello. Vice Chair Sayama, Chair Nakashima and members of the Committee on Consumer Protection and Finance. My name is Matty Mahiula and like, I'd like to stand on my written testimony and also offer some comments. The gentleman from Aloha Green Holdings earlier stated that the average price for an ounce of cannabis is to, on average, two hundred and sixty dollars. I'm not sure where you pulled this figure from. But if I consult the Aloha Green website right now, the average price they have advertised for a single ounce is about four hundred dollars and that's all I'd like to say about that. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other persons here to testify? Please go ahead.
My name is Brian Goldstein. I submitted my testimony late. I just want to highlight a couple of comments. My background is I'm founder of Noah Botanicals, one of the three licensed dispensaries in Oahu. I'm not speaking on behalf of the company today though. This bill closes a loophole, loophole. There, no one is disagreeing, I don't think, about the medical and therapeutic benefits of cannabis. What this bill is trying to do is close a loophole to not allow unlicensed dispensaries to operate, which is exactly what Care Waialua is. It's not a cooperative. It's a for-profit LLC and it's operating in an unlicensed dispensary. So that's what this loophole, that's a loophole that this bill is going to help close. And people will be able to continue to grow cannabis in their small, family-run cooperatives even after this bill is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more members testifying on this measure? Okay, seeing none. Members, are there any questions?
I have a quick question from this gentleman over here.
Go ahead.
Sam? So you say you run a Team Relief. I'm assuming that's a small cooperative. Can you explain what that is?
Team Relief, it's for three-two-nine cardholders as like myself. And what I do is I provide, like say you are unable, say you live on the west side, right? And I know there is no Aloha Green, there is no cannabis industry at all on the west side because that's where I live. And there's no farms or anything that are fully operable as they are on the North Shore. And I feel that's due to the money.
Okay, so what do you do?
What do I do? I provide, I grow plants for people. That's what I do.
And how many cards do you or?
Do I operate at this moment?
Do you grow?
Myself and one other.
So just two?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you use the cannabis that you grow?
Yes, I do.
For your qualifying patient?
What do you mean? Do I, for myself and for the patient?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
And is that because you are a primary caregiver that is a three-two-nine holder?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but if you were a primary caregiver that was not a three-two-nine cardholder, would you say would be inappropriate for you to use the qualifying patient's cannabis?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the law states that you have to have a three-two-nine card just to even operate because it's not a recreational.
Okay, and then as part of your providing of services for your two other patients that you are a primary caregiver for, do you accept their cannabis as compensation for your services?
Do I accept their cannabis? Negative.
Okay, very good. So there is a reasonable provision in the law that basically covers what we just talked about.
Yes, ma'am.
That's not an unreasonable regulation to be inserting if that covers a situation that you just.
Yes, but if I have, so you're saying that I can only have five cardholders at my farm? So if I say like this gentleman wherever he is that has two acres, you're telling me he can only have five, five cardholders?
What, what we're looking at is regulations for co-ops and collectives. And you, I'm, I'm looking to see how this regulation is going to impact what is your business model.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you. Thank you for your testimony. That's what I'm looking at too. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, are there any other questions? Okay, actually I do have a question for Department of Health. If they're still here, okay. Okay, so you're familiar with Care Waialua Farms, I assume?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and so under the current statute, there are sanctioned operation or is it not?
No, they're completely unlicensed and unregulated.
Okay, so as it currently stands, you, you have issues with their operations. In what way?
So the, the, right now there is no limit on the number of cards that can be registered to a, to a site. However, state law requires that only a patient or their designated caregiver are allowed to handle cannabis. We don't know if this, if, if, if this requirement of state law is being upheld or not. So we're trying, that, that's why we would like to, to put some guardrails around that.
I see. And I'm not too sure how long Care Waialua Farm has been under, in operation, but has the Department of Health had any reports of concern of health issues from the products being distributed or farmed at Care Waialua Farm?
Not that I'm aware of. No, we haven't. But we have had other types of complaints.
Okay. I just ask because I, I do want to confirm that there have been a number of elected officials that have visited the site and I'm curious as to what the department's position is with these co-ops, large ones and small ones, as we've heard in the testimony. Does the department believe it's inappropriate for large co-ops like Care Waialua Farms?
Well, I mean, okay, so I was not with the program when it was first established in 2015 and it is my understanding that the reason for, for the, the not having limits. it is my understanding that the reason for the not having limits on multiple cards being registered to a grow site was to allow for more expanded home grow in the interim until the licensed dispensaries were stood up. But that situation has changed and that's part of the reason why we would like to move towards limiting grow sites. The Health Department fully supports patients and rights to grow as well as the right for them to designate a caregiver to grow for them. But just to point out, the limitation that we're trying to impose is not going to affect a large number of these grow sites. So of the grow sites that we currently have registered, there is one grow site that has over a thousand cards registered to it. There is one grow site that has forty-one to fifty cards registered to it. There are two grow sites that have thirty-one to forty cards registered to it. Three sites that have twenty-one to thirty cards registered to it. So this limitation of five cards per grow site is not going to affect a large number of home grow sites. We're really trying to get the large, uncontrolled, unregulated sites under control because, I mean, I guess the question is, why would you stand up a licensed, regulated dispensary system if you're going to have this type of a competing operation going on? I mean, that, you know? And I did want to correct some of the misstatements earlier about the proportion of patients who utilize the dispensary system. We recently did conduct a survey of patients and found that fifty-five percent of registered patients that responded to the survey exclusively obtained their projects, products from a licensed dispensary. But eighty-six percent of patients say that they do use multiple sources and that would include home cultivation. So we do support the patient's right to be able to home grow and have a caregiver grow for them. But we also do think that the dispensary system needs to be strengthened and this is one of the ways to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll be moving on to, oh, I'm sorry, members, I forgot to mention that there were fifty-nine written testimonies in opposition to HB twelve seventeen HD one. Okay, and with that, we'll be moving on to the next measure in our agenda, HB six fifty HD one. This is relating to health. Authorizes advanced practice registered nurses to practice medical aid in dying or provide counseling to a qualified patient. Amends the mandatory waiting period between oral requests and the provisions of a prescription. Provides an expedited pathway for terminally ill qualified patients who are not expected to survive the mandatory waiting period effective June thirtieth three thousand. Okay, first to testify on this measure, we have Department of Health in support.
Aloha, Chair. It's good to be in front of your committee again in person, vice chair members of the committee. My name is Lauren Kim, the Planning and Policy Officer for the department. We look, the department supports the intent of this. There are some details that need to be worked on and we strongly support that this conversation move along and I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Board of Nursing with comments.
The Board of Nursing members have been in the testimony on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Compassion and Choice in support. Not here.
Sorry, there are several of us. Is there a certain name?
Let's see. We have Aubrey Hawk?
That's me.
Okay, perfect.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. I'm Aubrey Hawk. I live in Puna slash Kaua on the Big Island. Many, many elder residents there. One of my roles is as a volunteer patient navigator for people who are having great difficulty trying to access the law that is currently on the books. The Our Care, Our Choice Act is too difficult for people to access, especially people who are in their final weeks and months and hoping for a peaceful, peaceful end to their suffering. I speak with people almost weekly sometimes and they come to me in great desperation by allowing APRNs to prescribe if they already have that prescriptive authority and by shortening the waiting period that is already the longest in the nation here in Hawaii, we will greatly increase access to this compassionate end-of-life option. I'm around for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Mans from Compassion and Choices in support.
Thank you. I'll stand on my written testimony.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Association of Professional Nurses in support. Okay. We'll be moving on then to the Hawaii Society of Clinical Oncology in support.
Yes, Chair, Vice Chair. I'm Dr. Charles Miller representing the Hawaii Society of Clinical Oncology and I will stand on my written testimony. I'm very much in support of the bill. I think it will correct several of the major barriers that still exist. Just for information purposes, I've been the Program Director of Kaiser Hawaii's Medical Aid and Dying Program since its inception in nineteen, or 2019, and I've seen over a hundred and forty patients in referral and I feel, I'm sure, that I have more experience with the Our Care, Our Choice Act than any other physician in this state. And my only other comment is that I am disappointed and opposed to the recommendations that the Hawaii Medical Association has made in their testimony. I think any of those will simply make the bill, will make the law harder to access. They're redundant and really unnecessary. And I'm available for questions whenever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Samantha Trad from Compassion and Choices in support.
Yes, thank you. I stand on my written testimony and I just wanted to add, thank you so much for hearing this bill. I know this has been a really long hearing. And echoing Dr. Miller, we were really surprised to see the recommendations that HMA made. For example, the Department of Health already does put out a yearly annual report, so it was a really good amendment because it already does that, which is really helpful. And if you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Malachi Grange in support.
Hi. My name's Malachi Grange. I'm a retired RN and currently serve as a hospice volunteer. I ask the committee to use your compassion and wisdom to approve the revisions to the Our Care, Our Choice Act. I also ask the committee and everyone in this room to hear the story of Wali, who after much prayer and discussion, consulting their friends and their moral compass, chooses to use medical aid in dying. And I'll tell you now, this is how I got in to the building. This is for Wali's death that happened within the last week. This is what I needed to get into his hospital. Okay, so family and friends were planning to gather for final acts of love, to be a part of the celebration of life and the acceptance of death, a healing, a forgiveness. They had the date planned. Some were coming from the mainland. They expected, as Wali did, to be able to access medical aid in dying and still have time to have this ritual. Now imagine the pain and devastation of families when their loved ones died before they planned to because of a lack of medical providers in Hawaii and a far-too-long waiting period. Thirty percent of patients in Hawaii seeking medical aid in dying pass away before completing the process. Please use your compassion and wisdom to make sure this tragedy does not happen to any more families in Hawaii. For their sake, please approve these provisions.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Amina in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. My name is Susan Amina. I'm a nurse practitioner and I have three and a half years of direct medical aid in dying experience. I've helped over eighty patients who are interested in this option. In addition to my written testimony, I'm here to share a story with you. Richard was a seventy-nine-year-old man who was highly accomplished archaeologist. He taught at Brown and at UH. He was diagnosed with esophageal cancer and given a prognosis of less than six months to live. He wanted control at the end of his life and requested to pursue medical aid in dying. He completed the three provider evaluations quickly. He died on day fourteen, six days short of the twenty-day waiting period. He was enrolled in hospice, home hospice, as we recommend to all our patients. His wife shared with me that he was lucid at the end and in intolerable pain. She asked me to share the following, and I quote, "If any of you went through what he did and was unable to obtain the medication, you would be sure to approve the decrease in the waiting period." End of quote. The man she was married to for fifty-seven years had a horrific death because in part of Hawaii's prolonged waiting period. Among the many memories she has, this will unfortunately be one of them. In addition, I just want to share that as an advanced practice RN, I'm absolutely qualified under my scope of practice to be a provider in the made process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Loke Lani Rodriguez in support. We'll move on to Jackie Mishler in opposition on Zoom.
Am I on? I haven't used this before.
Yes, we can hear you and see you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, honorable members of TPC Committee and especially Honorable Representatives Teresa Mato, Natalia Hussey-Birdet, Adrian Tam, Elijah Purick and Jackson Semaya, who are new to the legislature. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm Jackie Mishler, a board-certified patient advocate and a retired RN from Maui. Simon Garfunkel saying, silence like a cancer grows. Institutional memory, I was there, will tell you that more than half the people in Hawaii never wanted assisted suicide and euthanasia to begin with the OCOC Act. Honorable Representative Della Alvolati promised us that Hawaii would have the strongest safeguards in the nation. If that legislative promise is to be kept, these bills that are being promoted should at the very least wait or give us ten years before we start dropping off those promised strong safeguards. The time agreed it takes to see the effects and issues of new legislation. Please remember that less than a handful of states allow assisted suicide even now. There is no proven necessity for reducing safeguards at this time, even if we grant, which we probably won't, that PAS and euthanasia would ease suffering in individual cases. We have to ask ourselves, what are the risks we run as a society allowing this measure, lowering the safeguards? Are there alternative ways to alleviate the suffering which have lower risks? Let's wait a little longer. Please seek a solution which will be as good for the patient but will be better than this plan to expand the killing for the society. Nurses cannot, for insurance purposes, write a terminal diagnosis for a patient. Why should we suddenly allow them, who as a profession don't necessarily want it?
My apologies, your two-minute time limit is up. Can you please summarize your testimony?
Sure, to write lethal prescriptions. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time. Please defer.
Thank you. Okay, members, we have thirty-four written testimony in support, testimony with comments from the Hawaii State Center of Nursing, Hawaii Medical Association, Hawaii Psychological Association, the Hawaiian Islands Association for Marriage and Family Therapy. And we have opposition, testimony in opposition from the Hawaii Family Forum and an individual. Okay, members, are there any other, are there any questions?
Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you here to testify on this measure?
Yes, I am.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. Michael Goli Jr. on behalf of the Stonewall Caucus and Democratic Party of Hawaii. We are proud that we stood by this and having this bill pass, having this original Our Care, Our Choice Act passed. We are glad, we're here extremely happy to be standing here today and supporting today's bill because it will remove the unnecessary barriers for our fellow people that actually live here in Hawaii to access this such needed care. Much like we've seen with abortion, that without access, it doesn't really matter and that this bill will ensure that access for our member, for our fellow Hawaiians, our locals that want to use this law. We've seen in testimony after testimony throughout this session, there's a medical problem. We have medical shortages for doctors here in Hawaii and this will help and we're using APRNs to help relieve that problem. And here's another area that they, those that are trained will be able to do so. So we encourage you to pass this bill to help protect those that desperately need it. Mahalo.
Thank you. Are there any other members, persons here to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none. Representative Purick, you had a question?
This would be from any State Department.
Yes, Representative, how can I help you?
Yes, so I'll preface the question with an anecdote so you understand where I'm coming from. So as a hospice chaplain, I've serviced many families choosing maid service, medical aid in dining. And one family in particular, the nurse pulled me aside and said, hey, the patient's saying, I don't want to die. I don't want to die. They said that repeatedly, but every time the daughter comes in, she switches her narrative and says, oh, honey, I'm just ready to go. Just help me go. And so this patient had this bifurcated perspective and they were prescribed maid service. What's the Department of Health's perspective on this, where for some reason the patient by themselves doesn't want to die, when the family's there, they sometimes, based on the nurse's testimony, based on my observation as a board-certified chaplain, see that the family seems to be pressuring their loved one to die. What is the department's position on that? This will be a disappointing answer, but our function is ministerial. We are, the law requires us to collect the data and to report it. We have aggregated both anecdotal and quantifiable data on the experiences. I have not heard an anecdote or seen quantifiable data where coercion was implied. This is actually the first time I'm hearing it. I've implemented the program since its inception. The safeguards that are in place, including an evaluation by a counseling provider as well as to attending providers, were intended to maybe tease out some of these variables in it. And to the extent that the paperwork that reports the medical aid in dying experience back to the department has or does not have, well, it does not, I've not seen this data. So I think, I understand that may be an unsatisfying answer for you, that we do not have a position, but, you know, we consider this a private matter between a physician, a provider and their patient. To the extent that the family is part of the equation, obviously, we would encourage that. We do recognize that families may be divided in the choice that the individual is making, but that is still a family decision and ultimately does come down to the patient and the provider. That is the most irreducible relationship that this process supports. So again, I think that may be an unsatisfying answer for you, but I have not seen the data. I'm intrigued by that and it is something that I think we need to noodle over very carefully. Thank you for your reply. There's another question I have and to better understand the question, I'll share another anecdote. Being a chaplain for multiple years, providing pastoral care to these patients, another scenario was the patient wanted euthanasia, but the family didn't want it, so now it's flipped. Basically, the time came for, I think it was a cup of water, they put the cup of, they put the pill in the cup of water, the patient drinks it or something like that so that they can die. And the process was supposed to take like forty minutes. The patient didn't die till like thirteen hours and she basically went into a coma and the family's, you know, freaking out, the patient's just on the bed, non-responsive and then she died like thirteen hours later. Does the Department of Health have a comment on scenarios like that? That is within the scope of practice of medicine. We do not have a comment on that. I have heard anecdotes similar to that on the mainland. Medicine is, as much science is behind, as much science is behind medicine, it is still an art. There are a lot of variables that are involved with it. I'm not a clinician, but these are things that, as we've talked about, worst-case scenarios... I'm not a clinician, but these are things that, as we've talked about, worst-case scenarios or what the average medical aid and dying participant can expect, there will always be outliers. I think there would be significant alarm bells across the board if this were a very common experience. But unfortunately, you know, statistics tells us that we have outliers, and I don't want to reduce this family's burden and pain to cold statistics. But unfortunately, these things do happen. And again, if we get information, starting with anecdotal, that can be quantified, that this is more than an extremely rare and unfortunate and tragic experience, we definitely need to roll up our sleeves and see what's going on.
Thank you.
We'd be very interested in unpacking that if there was enough momentum behind the anecdotes and the data.
Thank you. Another question. So another patient, this patient wanted to commit suicide, so the nurse heard about it, and they called the social worker, they called me, we responded to the patient, and then about a year later, that same patient then asked for medical aid and dying. And now it's a flipped scenario where, instead of trying to prevent it because it's categorized as suicide, now it's categorized as maid service, medical aid and dying, and now we're supporting it. Does the Office of Health have some sort of perspective on how they differentiate between suicide and euthanasia?
So medical aid and dying is a right. It is not defined in statute as suicide or some similar terms. With regard to the, how the provider responds to it, as, and again, I would, you know, refer to Dr. Miller, who quantifiably has had the most experience with his counseling and being attending for the most patients. You will encounter, I would imagine, many of the patients, based on the diagnoses that we get for participants who successfully complete the process. And by complete the process, I mean they get the script written, not that they ingest it. They are, they tend to be cancers and very serious bodily diseases. Again, I haven't seen diagnoses or, to the extent that it's on our forms, notes or anecdotes that this person last year attempted suicide. Again, we hope that the counseling provider will be able to unpack that. That's why the law requires a psychologist or a psychiatrist or a licensed clinical social worker to apply their professional scope of practice and experience to unpack that. Again, no safeguard is 100% foolproof. These are really tragic anecdotes, and we need to continue to reassess where we are. So the data that we receive from providers and even some of the anecdotes that we get, I think, contribute to that better understanding of how we can balance safety and an individual's right to have agency at the end of their life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I heard you say that there's a desire to have these kinds of things, you know, noted in the chart, that a patient wanting to commit suicide now, instead just opting for euthanasia. In this instance that I'm talking about, the nurse and the social worker, I believe, were Catholics, and they chose to opt out of that patient's circle because it was, they felt guilty for being a part of such a thing. So that's probably why you didn't see, whoever looks at these notes didn't see the notes because they just didn't want to talk about it anymore. They just stepped away from the patient's care.
And the data that is supplied to the Department of Health is more metrics-focused. Again, because we recognize, and the law was crafted to recognize this as a patient-provider relationship and an individual choice, as well as a provider's individual choice to provide this service, you know, that's not where you want government to be poking around sensitive psychological notes. So again, we depend on the professionalism of licensed healthcare providers to exercise their clinical judgment and their experience to unpack and to provide the appropriate guidance. Just because the department doesn't collect it doesn't necessarily mean we should. Again, if it's fairly sensitive, and we're already dealing with a very sensitive and private issue. But if that's where the legislature takes this law, then we will implement it because, again, our function is primarily ministerial.
Thank you for being so gracious, answering my questions. Just one last question. Can you provide a definition for suicide and then provide a contrasting definition for euthanasia?
I'll have to get back to you. If you're talking about this with respect to the law, I'll have to talk to my Deputy Attorney General because that's an interpretation of Hawaii by statute. But I'm happy to respond, work with my Deputy AG and respond to the chair with that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 914, HD 1 relating to health, requires the Department of Health to prioritize complaints, allegations based on severity for inspections of state-licensed or state-certified care facilities, clarifies who is prohibited from knowingly referring or transferring patients to an uncertified or unlicensed care facility, repeals the landlord exclusion effective June 30, 3000. First to testify on this measure, we have Department of Health in support.
Good early evening, Chair and members of the committee. Keith Ridley, Chief of the Office of Healthcare Assurance, on behalf of the Director of Health. The department strongly supports this bill, and we stand by our testimony. I'll be available for questions, but I just want to add that the department also understands and appreciates the concern raised in the committee report from the Committee on Health and Homelessness and is willing to work with the department to improve wording. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members, we also have testimony in opposition from the Hoi Substance Abuse Coalition. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, are, do you have any questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 1439, HD 1 relating to eviction mediation. This establishes and appropriates funds for a pre-litigation mediation pilot program, requires landlord to participate in mediation before filing an action for summary possession, create and, creates and appropriates funds for an emergency rent relief program effective June 30, 3000. First to testify on this measure, we have Hoi Public Housing Authority in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We stand in support of this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hoi Appleseed Center for Law and Economic Justice in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I appreciate you considering this important bill. I'm Gavin Thornton from Hawaii Appleseed. Just want to mention quickly, this legislature was responsible for enacting some of the most effective eviction prevention programs in the nation in response to the pandemic. This bill is designed to carry those forward, much needed, and really appreciate your consideration of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Okay, members, we have written testimony in support from Judiciary State of Hawaii, Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence, Planning for Community LLC, Papa Ola, Lokahi, Family Promise of Hawaii, Kui Kahi Mediation Center, and several individuals. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a short recess for decision-making recess.
Okay, Committee on Commerce and Consumer Affairs is reconvening for decision making. Wednesday, February 15. First bill, House Bill 389, House Draft 1, related to taxation. Chair's recommendation is that we put into the committee report to direct DOH to promulgate rules. It's already in the body of the bill as well. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 389, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair, Vice Chair, vote aye. Representative Almato?
Aye.
Representative Bellotti?
Aye.
Representative Hashem?
Aye.
Representative Hesse Burdeck?
Aye.
Representative Gates, excused. Representative Loewen?
Aye.
Representative Onishi?
Aye.
Representative Tam?
Aye.
Representative Puerk?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Members, House Bill 588, House Draft 1, related to renewable energy. Chair's recommendation is that we defer this measure. Next, House Bill 193, House Draft 1, relating to energy efficiency portfolio standards. The Chair's recommendation is that we pass this out as is. Members, any questions or comments?
Comments.
Yes, Representative.
I'd like to thank the introducers of this bill. At the same time, I'm concerned that this would cause more burdens for Hawaii Electric and other energy groups in the state and that it would potentially make our electricity more expensive, knowing that our electricity is one of the most expensive in the nation. So for those reasons, I'll be voting no.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as is.
Voting on HB 193, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates and the no vote from Representative Puerk. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 949, House Draft 1, related to renewable energy. Okay, on page, on page one, line nine to twelve, the term asset limited income constrained employed household is defined in this section as a household with an income of up to 140% AMI. The same income limitations as saw on page two and lines two to three for the second program. If both are these targeting Alice households for consistency, we may wish to consider adding a definition to the definition section of this part in 196-61. So we will include the definition of the asset limited constrained employed household. And I'd like to put into the committee report that finance should further examine the appropriateness of including a revolving fund in the bill. Members, any questions or comments? Chair? Representative Onishi?
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed this bill. I wasn't here in terms of questioning. But I do have a question about what is considered a low interest loan. Right now, I mean, interest rates are, for thirty year mortgages, are like under seven percent. For Alice families, I mean, even a two or three percent loan may not be affordable. So with no definition of what low interest means, I'm concerned that Alice families would not qualify anyway to get any of these loans based on their status, income level, you know. So, you know, it seems like a good idea whether or not Alice families will be able to qualify for these loans really depends on what the details are. I would rather see Alice families get a zero interest loan in order for them to buy vehicles because they are Alice families. And so to me, you know, I have strong reservations about whether or not these bills would work in terms of these, both bills and the loan programs. So I'll be voting with reservations.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 949, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates and the reservations vote from Representative Onishi. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 1295, House Draft 1, related to farms. I'd like to note.
Oh, Chair.
Oh, can I have some?
I think we're on 190.
Okay, 198, I'm sorry, I skipped a page. Okay, House Bill 198, House Draft 1, related to electric vehicles. Chair's recommendation is to pass this out as is. Members, any questions or comments?
And comments.
Well, I'd like to thank the introducers of this bill and the idea of renewable energy. My understanding is that we should promote a free market that's led by the consumer. So incentivizing electric vehicles seems to be a bigger government perspective versus a decreased government perspective. So for those reasons, I'm voting no.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Chair, I have the same concerns about the interest rates and whether or not Alice families would qualify or be just capable of taking out these loans. So I'm going to be voting with reservation.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions or comments? Representative Loewen?
It's a rebate program.
Okay, okay. There are no further questions or comments. Recommendation is as is. Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation, sorry, voting on HB 198, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates and the no vote from Representative Puerk and, sorry, with reservations from Representative Onishi. Are any other members voting no? Voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 520, House Draft 1, related to economic development. House Bill 181, related cesspools. Chair's recommendation is to pass this out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Representative.
Well, I'd like to thank the introducers of this bill. I'm voting no because this puts on the consumer, the homeowners, a very large financial burden. The Hawaii realtors quoted 97% of homeowners that will be affected by this bill cannot pay to have the cesspool converted. So with the goal of protecting the consumer and helping things to become more affordable in Hawaii, I'm voting no.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as is.
Voting on HB 181, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates and the no vote from Representative Puerk. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 520, House Draft 1, related to economic development. Chair's recommendation is that we move this as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as is.
Voting on HB 520, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 71, related to summary possession. Chair's recommendation is that we add a defective date, June 30, 3000, to continue discussion. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 71, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excuse absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 1382, House Draft 1, related to meat donation. Chair would like to change the Meat Inspection Act to, in the bill, to process in accord, process the meat in accordance with federal law since we surrendered jurisdiction of meat inspection to the, to the federal government. Also, the AG's suggestion that a task force be placed within the Department of Agriculture to develop and implement a plan to expand the meat availability. So with those two recommend, those two changes, members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 1382, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 1295, House Draft 1, related to farms. I'd like to note that the chicken farmers includes egg farmers as well, and I would like to blank out the number of chickens required to participate in the program. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 1295, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 1359, House Draft 1, related to hemp. On line eighteen, the Department of Agriculture has asked us to delete lines nine to fifteen as it is, or the Department of Health has asked us to delete lines nine to fifteen because it's a program of the Department of Agriculture and not the Department of Health. So with that change, any members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 1359, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 329, House Draft 1, related to energy. Chair's only recommendation is that the scope of the bill be limited only to market rate construction and not affordable housing. Members, any questions or comments?
While I'd like, while I'd like to, while I'd like to thank the introducers of this bill to quote Nav Hawaii, they said that it can cost thousands of dollars more to build houses with this mandate versus the way they are currently being built. So I understand that there's a housing crisis. My goal is to help the economy, so I'll be voting no.
Okay, thank you very much. Representative Onishi?
Yeah, Chair, clarification. When you're talking about marketplace housing, are you talking about the entire project only being marketplace or does, would this affect?
So market rate housing.
Yeah.
So I'm excluding affordable housing from this.
Okay, so if a project does not have any affordable housing component, they would not need to follow this law. Because there are many projects that have affordable housing components, like, you know, a certain percentage of that development have to be made available for affordable housing.
So I would, I would indicate, I would think that the affordable housings would not be covered by this, just the market rate.
The affordable housing, but?
The affordable housing would not be required to implement this section of this bill.
So, okay, I don't know how you would do that because it's part of the whole scope of the project, right?
Yeah, well, it moves to finance so we can.
Okay.
Leave it to them. Because I think you know which, which, which buildings you're building at affordable housing and which ones you're building at market rate.
Well, I know that there are projects, like take for example, what is that, 808 South Street? There was market and affordable housing in that development. So what is the requirement, you know, versus? requirement, you know, versus like other developments along Alamoana Boulevard, which have no affordable housing component, was strictly market.
Well, I think this, this envisions multifamily residences and duplexes with single-family residences and two-family detached residences. So I'm not sure that it will-
So this is only for residential property, single-family or duplex?
Yes.
What if you have a townhouse development?
We did, we did not envision a townhouse development.
Okay, well, let finance deal with it.
Okay, members, any other questions or comments?
Sure, I'll make a comment. I think it's just applying to residences, I think not to multi-unit dwellings. So I guess it would depend on how the townhouse development was classified. But, but it has been, there's already laws existing where it applies to the affordable housing, you know, units specifically where certain things are, certain, where the affordable housing portion of one project is exempted from whatever the requirements might be. So it's not like a mechanism that's never been used before. And my comment, that as a preface, is that, you know, the benefit is that you're saving the cost of putting this stuff in after the fact. Thank you.
Okay, members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 329, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates and the no vote from Representative Purik. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations?
Reservations.
Reservations by Representative Onishi. Any other members voting with reservations? Okay, thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 1236, House Draft 1, related to affordable housing. Chair's recommendation is that we sunset this after two years to see what the impact might be on the financial institutions section of DCCA. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 1236, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 551, House Draft 1, related to health. Chair's recommendation is that we pass this out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, unamended.
Voting on HB 551, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 1409, House Draft 1, related to employee benefits. Chair's, Chair would like to incorporate DLIR's amendments into the bill. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 1409, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 1110, House Draft 1, related to road usage charge program. Chair's recommendation is that technical amendments need for clarity, consistency, and style. I will note the bill already contains a blank appropriation and defective effective date. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 1110, HD1, Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 562, House Draft 1, related to permits. Chair's recommendation is we pass this as is. Members, any questions or comments?
Chair?
Representative Onishi?
Yeah, I have a problem with the lack of definition in this whole concept. It's a program. We don't have a definition of what the repetitive construction projects are. We don't have any requests for personnel in order to implement this. We don't know how it's going to affect occupancy of the project, who's going to be responsible for ensuring or taking liability on the project. So with that, I'm going to be voting with reservations on this.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, unamended.
Voting on HB 562, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excuse, excuse absence of Representative Gates. Are any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1219, House Draft 1, related to cannabis for medical use. I'd like to incorporate the Aloha Green amendments to this matter.
No, wait, we're in 1219.
No, 1219. Yeah, related to cannabis for medical use. Is it that?
The Aloha Green one is the 1217.
Oh, 1217, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry. House Bill 1219, House Draft 1, related to cannabis for medical use. I would defer this measure. House Bill 955, House Draft 1, related to chapter 457J, Hawaii statute. I'd like to reinsert the term qualified midwife perceptor into the bill. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 955, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excuse absence of Representative Gates. Are any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations?
Reservations.
Reservations, Representative Tam. Any others? Okay. Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 663, House Draft 1, related to breast cancer screening. Chair's recommendation is that we defer this measure. House Bill 1271, related to medical cannabis. House Draft 1, related to medical cannabis. Technical amendments need for clarity, consistency, and style. A correction to the bill, the bill on page 12, lines 6 to 15, the bill amends chapter 328D-2, which is located in the bottled water chapter, and we believe that it should be chapter 329D2, which is the medical cannabis dispensary chapter. Also, I'd like to add the, this is where I put in the Aloha Green amendments. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 1217, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excuse absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 650, House Draft 1, related to health. Chair's recommendation is we pass this as is. Members, any questions or comments? Representative Perchett?
Well, I'd like to thank the introducers of this bill for their intent and understanding that we all have the desire to help make Hawaii better, but we have different ways of getting there. I'm voting no, believing that this measure does not comply with the Hippocratic oath of do no harm. It's my understanding that, based on my firsthand experience in sociology, that this causes much turmoil to families and patients wanting to commit suicide with the, you know, adoption of the medical field, saying that's okay. And this, also based on theology, knowing that a perspective of the Bible says that it's not right to, to kill yourself. I'm voting no.
So, pass as is. Vice chair?
Okay. Voting on HB 650, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excuse absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Oh, I'm sorry. Representative, Representative Purik voting no. Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 914, House Draft 1, related to health. Chair's recommendation is pass this as is. Members, questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, unamended.
Voting on HB 914, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excuse absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 1439, House Draft 1, related to eviction means condition. Chair's recommendations that we include technical amendments need for clarity, consistency, and style, that on page 11, lines 14 to 17, the bill prohibits persons from participating in the emergency rent relief program more than once. And the program is open to landlords and tenants. If the intent is that the tenant may not avail themselves to their rent relief program more than once, then the word person on should be changed to tenant, and we will leave it at tenant. Okay, so. Members, any questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to thank the introducers of this bill. My understanding is that this measure favors the renter over the landlord, and with the recent pandemic, we had many landlords who were struggling to survive economically, knowing that the laws began to favor the renters, and knowing that the landlords have a mortgage, we need to understand that they need to pay their mortgage through the rents from the renters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Voting on HB 1439, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excuse absence of Representative Gates. Any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, we are adjourned.